All right. Good evening. On behalf of the members of the Planning Board and our professionals, I would like to welcome you to tonight's meeting of the Sparta Township Planning Board. This meeting is being held September 3rd, 2025 at the Sparta Township Municipal Building, located 65 Main Street, Sparta. Proceedings of the meeting are being livestreamed on YouTube. The address for that is www.youtube.com/spartatwp. The time is now 7:03 PM, and this meeting is called to order. Please note that no new business will be conducted after 9:30 PM, and the meeting will end at 10:00 PM. Please stand and join the board as we proudly pledge our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Jeanette Burke?
Here.
Ernie Ragsstad?
Here.
Brian Zimmerman?
Here.
Ron Day?
Joan Furman?
Here.
Councilman Mark Scott?
Here.
Birgit Bogler?
Here.
Vice Chairman Robert Otto?
Here.
Celeste Luciano?
Here.
Christine Dunbar?
Here.
I would like to make a motion for Celeste Luciano to be nominated for Chair of the Sparta Planning Board.
Yes, I'll second.
All right, so on the issue, that is not on the form of the agenda, however, there is a motion, has been seconded during the discussion. This issue of the Chairperson has been brought to my attention by Joan Furman, who had some concerns over the voting. She brought to my attention a Hamilton Planning Board decision, and I did discuss that decision with the Board of Adjustment Attorney Glenn Keans and also the Borough Attorney, Anand Dash. Interesting issue, the Hamilton case is an unreported case, it's out of the county, but it deals with the quorum issues and vacancy versus absentee versus disqualification. And Joan had brought to my attention, again, this case, that if you were to follow the case, that since there's the Class II vacancy, Class I is the mayor, Class II is the municipal representative, Class III is the councilman, and Class IV is the general public. Since there is no sitting Class II member, therefore Joan questioned whether or not the alternates were permitted to vote. The case law talks about the alternate vote in case of absence or in case of disqualification. The Hamilton case talks about the vacancy is not a disqualification or an absence. However, Mr. Keens then sent to me a case from our county dealing with Morris Plains and McDonald's, and in that case, the court had found that the technical irregularities in appointments a board officer is saved by the de facto officer doctrine. So the de facto officer doctrine holds that acts of those acting in good faith under color of appointment are valid, and that cites a Jersey City case, which is an appellate division case back from 1959. So therefore, in consultation with the Borough Attorney and the Board of Adjustment Attorney, I would agree that the board, even if there's a technical irregularity, that the Jersey City appellate case in our county by Judge Minkowitz of August 22nd, 2025, would support the position of the board. Joan did, again, bring Ms. Furman to my attention, that other case, but I do believe that Judge Minkowitz and the opinions of the Board of Adjustment Attorney and the Borough Attorney are that which we should follow. I do represent the board, I do not represent individuals, so again, out of courtesy to Ms. Furman, I said I would put that on the record, that she brought it to my attention, and I did look at it. So there has been a second and any more discussion. I think there was also an email in our package with reference to this issue, but that is just duly noted as part of the notice to the Borough. I have nothing further. We have a...
All right, I will say, though, it's very clear in Statute 40:55D-23.1, alternate members may participate in all matters but may not vote except in the absence or disqualification of a regular member of any class. And the Hamilton Township case did define vacancy as opposed to an absence or a disqualification. So I will be filing something, so there will be some litigation on this, and I think that it should hold until that is decided. I also want to point out that under the Open Public Meetings Act, and you know, there may be some disagreement, but it does say that everything is supposed to be on the agenda, that you can bring it up for discussion, but if it's not on the agenda, it should not proceed to a vote, that it is a public matter, and it defines what a public matter is, and anything that, you know, is brought up in public. And this was brought up in public, so I would question it on that. And I would cite the distinguishing member from a vacancy, going back to that. Here's the decision. It says, here, "The board consisted of eight regular board members who all voted. One seat was vacant. The alternate was not authorized to vote because none of the regular members were absent or disqualified from voting on the matter. The board had a quorum. It was thus authorized to take action. No members were absent. Thus, only regular members of the board were eligible to vote. The alternates should not have voted." And it was a five-four split vote, and the judge said they could not vote and had to, you know, go back to it. So I'm putting it on the record. And we'll see what the courts have to say.
I want to thank Joan for all her hard work and relentless work. You know, she's been doing the right thing here. She knows the MLUL better than anybody else on this dais, except maybe our esteemed lawyer. She's, you know, what this really all comes down to is that Joan has drawn the ire of Neil Clark. Neil has put his desire and drive to have cannabis in this town over all other priorities. His political future is greater than that of Sparta's township's future. He puts his future ahead of Sparta Township's future. He has decided to dismantle boards by taking people off of boards, putting his surrogates on in the boards, and to push his cannabis. He has placed his pawns in place. Let's think of the greater implications of what we're doing here by dismantling this board and its wonderful leadership. You remove someone that lives by and enforces the rules, and the blocks begin to tumble down. I don't believe that Celeste is the right candidate, and let us recall that Ms. Luciano from the podium here has said to residents, "I will chop you off at the legs. I will..."
Cut you off at the knees.
Mr. Scott, if you're going to quote me, please quote me correctly.
This is my dais.
Mr. Scott, if you're going to quote me, please quote me correctly.
Yes, it was cut off at the knees.
What I said, what I said, what I said to Mr. Dash.
Mr. Porro.
What I said to Mr. Dash at the time.
All right, point of order.
Please, may I continue?
No.
Yeah, you can finish.
Okay, so you know, during that case, she ignored the lawyers. She ignored the lawyer, she ignored the counsel that was giving her counsel.
Who did I ignore?
She led the board into a bad decision on the veterinary hospital. It resulted in a lawsuit. It cost the town tens of thousands of dollars, and the town lost. And this was all because of Mrs. Luciano's...
Councilman Scott?
Mrs. Luciano's ire.
I'd like to retort, please.
Iire at the moment.
I'd like to retort. First, let me say that whether I'm Chair or not Chair, there's one thing that you, as the council liaison, should be doing that you're not doing, and that's keeping politics out of our board.
You're bringing it here.
No, I'm not. I literally did not start this conversation, sir, you did.
Okay, that's great.
So, let us continue.
Yeah, let us.
What I had said to Mr. Dash when he was exceeding his time, because I did not want to put a time limit on him, I said, "Mr. Dash, I apologize. I do not want to have to cut you off at the knees, but unfortunately, I would like you to get to your point. You can go back and watch the video." Now, at the end of that, when he came back to the microphone under the guise of, "I am going to respond..."
This was a resident you were speaking to?
This was Mr. Dash.
Yeah, a resident of the town.
Which you can actually, actually, if he were here, I would love to have that conversation with him because he would back me up on this conversation. What I had said to him at the time, when he was brought back to the microphone to retort testimony that was being provided by Catherine Sarmad, when he did not retort that testimony, and I asked him if he had anything to add, and he did not add anything continued of value beyond his original argument. And the conversation, it was the last meeting, it got heated. I am human, as is he, and he and I have had this conversation subsequent to that meeting. I had said to him, after he had said to me, "This microphone is here for the public", and I said, "That may be true, but this is my dais. Now, here's the point. The point is, at that moment in time, and any chair who sits in that chair, not just me, anyone, they run the meeting, they run the room." Now, if I hadn't been heated, what I should have said was, "I am running this meeting." Yes, this dais is here for the people. This microphone is here for the people. I am here for the people, but unfortunately, being the human being that I am, I was heated, he was heated, we've had subsequent conversations, and everything has been fine between the two of us since then. So if you want to bring up things that you think you know, you might want to have the facts before you do that. So, whether you think I'm the right candidate or not, and I apologize, Councilman Scott, I didn't think you were the right candidate either.
Oh, well, then, why did you want to run with me?
I didn't, you asked me. That's why I said no.
No. Point of order. So if we're going off of that, it's actually my dais for right now.
Correct, correct.
And so I'd like to take a breath, and I wasn't going to do this, but since you guys couldn't do what we did last time, which was set this aside and let the applicants present and get through what they need to do, I'd like to do my own suggestion. So could I get you guys to just bear with me for a few minutes? Let's take a breather, let's take a break from this. For the last decade or so, I've sat through countless town council planning environmental meetings, and I've served on numerous volunteer boards in this community and elsewhere. I've worked with international teams managing complex projects, educating kids, college students, and the general public on boring things and interesting things. Drawing from this collective experience, I ask you to join me on a mental journey, which you can either find boring or interesting, but it's not pointless because clearly, we need to just take a breath here. So please, close your eyes, seriously, close your eyes, and imagine Sparta in the 1850s, actually, 1845. It's a muddy meadow about where Lake Mohawk was when you last saw it. The meadow's full of cows, and there are dirt roads with farmhouses. Frankly, it smells pretty bad, so how about we continue about 50, 60 years later? Turn of the century will have you enjoying fresh country air from one of the many boarding houses where people have gotten away from the city, and they're admiring the surrounding hills. You'll notice some of the roads are looking a little more passable, no sinkholes, sorry, cheap shot. Follow along as we move another few decades, and it's smoky and loud, and you notice there's a dam being built at the northern end of Judge Brogdon's meadow. You see brush fires as crews are clearing the meadow in teams, and you see steam shovels belching black smoke as they pluck boulders and tree stumps out of the muck. In the distance, you see water pooling and moving from the south end of the meadow and advancing north. Another decade, and the air smells like cut pine and hammering of carpenters and beeping of Model Ts as the soundtrack. There's an eager boom of vacation homes followed by the crush of the Great Depression. Warriors follow, work eventually resumes but at a slower pace. Nonetheless, White Deer Plaza and the boardwalk seem to always be busy. These last two decades have created a close-knit social community, and while Lake Mohawk's building department has continued to grow, the Crane Company is encouraging their membership to support what they've been working on in concert with the town. A vastly updated municipal construction and building department. In fact, a result of this is that they created the Planning Board that we're now serving on because Lake Mohawk was one of the early planned communities. Some of you may not realize that Sparta's municipal machine was not as fine-tuned as it... Well, I was going to say, as it is today, I'm not sure with the latest. But it was a cross-pollinating effort between initial agrarian community and city folk that brought in the country vacation lifestyle the Crane Company built around Lake Mohawk. 1950s, now 60s, 70s, and the Crane Company fades away. Other developers gain a foothold. Surrounding patchwork of Sparta starts getting infilled with houses. A few decades later, and Sparta's updated its master plan. A few decades later, in the 80s, it's updated its master plan to reflect and expect a pretty new vision, where today we're at 40,000 residents. There's no place like home, there's no place like home. All right, so you can open your eyes, welcome back, thank you for the diversion. Hopefully, we all got some rest. So it's 2025. We are collectively the Sparta Planning Board. According to Municipal Land Use Law of the state of New Jersey, it's our charge to draw from our experience, local knowledge, personal expertise, and interpret the local code and apply sound judgment to not just review applications but also plan for our future and the future of subsequent Spartans. If I had a contract for these efforts, it would be to improve our community for my sake, for my family's sake, and for the community's sake. I view the time spent on my dais as a worthy investment in our collective future. I may differ from some of you in my voting, but I absolutely love that we all feel comfortable in expressing our opinions and arriving at decisions that are a product of pure civic engagement. That said, I do refuse to waste my time and the community's time in plotting and bickering. I'm not going to ask you to close your eyes again, but let's just recognize it's September 2025, and I have been urged repeatedly, start small, don't make waves, recognize that there's significant gridlock in making meaningful progress. But I also realize time is precious, and I'm selfish, and I want my time here to mean something. So I just would kind of urge everyone, remember why we're here. Remember who we serve, which is the community, by the way, the business owners and the residents. And I just ask, as, you know, my brief time on the dais, that we just keep that in mind. And we have some applications to hear, and I'll turn it back to the rest of you guys.
Thank you, Rob.
Yep.
I appreciate that, Rob.
All right, one last thing before the vote. So an email came forward that I guess I need to read into the record, so I will do that. It's from Resident Daryl Savage. Dear Planning Board members, this is for all the members who voted to remove Ms. Furman. There are no individual emails provided, so it must be sent this way. I very much disapproved of your action when it failed previously and was shocked that you would put it up again for a vote after the public outcry against it. There was no credible reason to do this, and it is so unseemly and unfair that you are conducting business in this manner, especially as it appears to be solely in the purpose of exacting revenge on her from Councilman Clark, not my words, Daryl Savage's words. I beg you to please govern within the bounds of your ethical obligations in the future. However, I would say the undercurrent is, let's just do the volunteer jobs that we're tasked to do. Thanks.
And I've never met Daryl Savage. This is not from me, never met her in my life. She recognizes that Neil Clark interfered and acted as a town manager as opposed to doing the job he was supposed to do, did not communicate with council, and started this whole process rolling. It's a political thing, and it's not going to stop. So we're just going to back off. It's only going to be a couple of months, and things are going to change up here. And I'm one vote, one voice. I was before, I am now, and I will continue to do my job for the benefit of the community.
So there's a motion and a second. Roll call. Do roll call.
Birgit Bogler.
All right, so the vote is to have Celeste as the Chairperson.
Yeah, the vote is not to bring Sparta back to farmland, sorry.
Yes.
Jeanette Burke?
Yes.
Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
Ernie Ragsstad?
Yes.
Councilman Mark Scott?
Yeah.
Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Christine Dunbar?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Robert Otto?
No.
And Joan Furman?
I cannot vote for someone who does not have the best interests of the community, so now...
Yes or no?
You heard me.
Sounds like a no. All right, so how do you want to do this now? Because we have applications.
We have two applications. Celeste can take your seat or stay where she wants, wherever she's most comfortable this evening.
Actually, Rob, if you wouldn't mind, Joan, you can move down here. Rob, if you wouldn't mind taking Joan's seat, please, because I value my vice chair. Like other chairs.
That's a fair request, yeah.
So, anyone watching, don't go by the name tags, I guess.
Dori, do you want me to switch the name tags for you?
Yeah, please. I appreciate it.
Okay. Yes. Okay, bringing us back to an order of business. We are up to, on the agenda, the approval of minutes. It is my understanding that minutes are going to be held until...
Next meeting?
Next.
I'd like to ask that, this is the second time now in a row that we've had minutes that have not been ready for us. We spend the time reading them, going through them, and then they're just not formatted in time. Last time, it was presented at the dais when we got here, and we can't read them at the very last minute, so there needs to be a concerted effort to get them here so that we can do it and not waste our time. Thank you.
I will absolutely be sure that we have minutes available to us prior to the next meeting.
And it wouldn't be the second meeting in a row because the last meeting I had the minutes done.
If you'll recall, Ron Day sat there with a whole bunch of blanks that we had to fill in.
Because Mr. Day had the wrong packet.
Because it was presented that evening, and nobody got to see it beforehand.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, let us move forward to our public hearing. Right now, we have PB 25731, TQP Services Incorporated, 160 Woodport Road, Block 2016, Lot 11, on the C1 Zone amended site plan.
Try following that.
Welcome, and let us get you through this hopefully reasonably painlessly.
Is this on?
It is.
All right. Let's check these. Jay, here you go. Check, check. Check, check. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Daniel Bankenour for the law firm of Askin and Hooker, located in Sparta, New Jersey, here on the application of TQP Services Incorporated. Here on their behalf is Peter Kim and Mr. Jason Dunn. If I can, please have them sworn in. Mr. Porro?
Yes.
Swearing in.
Both of you.
Yes. Let's go with the applicant first, or who's ever speaking first, counsel?
Yep, we'll go with Master Ken first.
Rest of the Kim.
Yes, sir.
The Islamic swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got or affirm, whatever you prefer.
I do.
You do. And just your name and professional address for the record.
My name is Ken Lee, and 160 Woodport Road, and Sparta.
You're an agent, you're an agent of the dojo?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. You can sit down. Mr. Dunn? Mr. Porro, you want me to take?
I'm sorry.
It's okay, no problem.
Islamic swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got?
Yes, sir.
And as far as your address for the record, please, work address.
My business address is with Dykstra Associates, 11 Lawrence Road, Newton, New Jersey.
And as far as your license, is that you hold?
Professional planning license, New Jersey, and licensed landscape architect, and both are up to date and in good...
And I recall you've been accepted as an expert before this board?
Yes, that's correct.
I'd recommend he be accepted as an expert in the area of professional planning and professional landscaping. So, no?
So, accept.
Good.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're here this evening to discuss a property located at 160 Woodport Road, Block 2016, Lot 11. It's a half-acre lot in the C1 Community Commercial Zone. It's developed with a 6,263-square-foot building. There is one residential unit on the second floor that is accessed through the, I think, the back. Is that right, Jay? And there's parking in the back of the building as well through a garage door for two cars. And then on the first floor, there are three commercial units. One of them is a State Farm Insurance Agency. The other is a, it's called Humble Threads, it is a tailor. And then the last one is the one we're here this evening to seek approval for, which is a Taekwondo dojo. The new tenant operates only three days a week, Tuesday and Thursday, from 4:50 to 8:20, and Saturday from 10:00 AM to 12:30 PM. There are approximately five to 10 clients per class. Of those classes, some of them are children. If they are, in fact, children, they're generally dropped off, and the parents either leave. Sometimes they watch their phones in their car, but generally, they leave, they run their errands, and they come back because Master Ken's advised me that the parents tend to elicit responses from the kids, so they ask them to leave. So, Master Ken, if you'll come up to the microphone again, can you just raise that to your face? You've heard my recantation of what we're here to discuss this evening, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And do you accept that as your testimony this evening?
Yes.
Okay, is there anything you'd like to add or anything else?
I'm willing to change the Saturday class to Sunday, any problem there?
Okay, so if there's any problem, and the board has any concerns, he's willing to change it from Saturday to Sunday, but the application right now stands as Saturday. So, Mr. Dunn?
Counsel, before we go there, just can you spell your name, please, spell?
My real name is Q. Lee, but everyone calls me Master Ken.
Sorry.
Bruce Lee's not my real name. His real name is Jim Lee, but everyone calls him Bruce Lee, same thing. So, so everyone calls me Master Ken, but my real name is Q., like real, but K-Y-U instead of R. It's a Q., but most people, they don't know how to pronounce it properly, so they call me Ca-Yu or different ways. So that's why I have a different name, Master Ken.
KYU is your first name?
Yes.
And last name?
That's my legal name, and Lee, L-E-E, same as Bruce Lee, yes.
Got it.
Thank you. If the board would like, they can ask any questions of Mr. Lee before I bring up my next witness.
Just real quick, counsel, and I apologize.
No problem.
Give me the hours again.
Yeah, absolutely. So Tuesday and Thursday, 4:50 to 8:20 PM. And then Saturday from 10:00 AM to 12:30 PM.
Good, thank you.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Mr. Lee before I move on to Jason Dunn?
Any questions from the dais?
Just one. How large are the classes?
Oh, between five... Oh, between five and 10 people.
And those five to 10 clients of yours said that they would be willing to go on Sundays instead of Saturdays?
Yes, I could change the Saturday and Sunday class in case, because now I think Saturday, Humble Thread, they open, and Sunday if I open, nobody else besides me, so I can, you know, I can switch.
But they would come on Sundays instead of Saturdays?
Because I teach now, right now, Sunday on Hamburg, there's still people coming on Sundays. So a lot of parents, they're working, so, you know, sometimes father or, you know, mom switch the job and they drop off the kids and they go.
Mr. Lee, how many years you been in business?
In Sussex County since 2009, and I've been practicing martial arts since I was five. So now I'm 52, so pretty long time, and I taught in Army, and it's a lot of good discipline for all the kids. So that's why I love to teach and, you know, I love it. So that's why I'm trying to, I have a lot of students already in Sparta area, and they've been asking me, why don't you open another location? So I thought it's a great idea, so I start in like November. Yes, so that's why I'm here.
And do you have to hold any licenses for this?
Yes, I have international, I have to. That's actually a really good question. Now there's so many martial arts schools there, you don't know who's responsible for that. I have to have certified. I train myself, not, I'm sorry, not myself, but we have the headquarters from Korea, and they control, so I have an international master certified and also examiner, black belt examiner certified. So time to time I have to, you know, under the headquarters, they control all 250, the countries they control. So I have to go there to test, you know, pretty much like very strict about.
Are there any state of New Jersey licensing that is required?
They don't, but they do, I have to have international master to apply black belt certificate.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
So your primary location is in Hamburg?
Yes, yes, ma'am. So this is like a, you know, kind of satellite, like small classes from, you know, Hamburg, I mean, I'm sorry, Sparta area, so students that it's more convenient to come here instead of coming to my location.
And how many instructors or teachers do you, you teach the class yourself?
I have some students coming and learning about, you know, helping out for leadership, but basically instructors, me myself, yes.
And on average, how many assistants do you think you might have for classes?
I normally don't need it, but if I need it, maybe one more, maybe, yeah.
Okay.
But sometimes my, you know, kids taking class too, so sometimes they can help, yeah. The same as like Army, like we have like, we have a group, then we normally have the one leader to help out other, you know, small group, and then I pretty much, you know, help out everyone that way, yes.
When you said the Army, is that the United States Army or?
No, sir, in Korea.
In Korea, that's fine, thank you.
Korean Ranger instructor.
Any other questions from the dais?
Should we move to professionals?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Dunn, if you'll please go over the plans and the application.
Thank you. You hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So I had responsibility of learning the site, the application, meeting with the client and finding out what their needs were. So I'm familiar with what we're asking for tonight. This is a minor sub-site plan or amended site plan from an approval in 2003, whereas it said, in that approval is one of the conditions, if the uses were to change or one of the uses were to change, the owner would have to come back to the board to present that new use. This is considered, I think, a studio use where you have the teaching and the students, and the parking calculation is different for that use than an office or retail. That is, it's one inch, sorry, one space per 100 square feet of gross leasable space versus an office or retail, which is one space per 200 square feet. In your planner's calculations, which I agree with, she says that there are 17 spaces provided and 23 that are required based on those calculations. So we're asking for the, kind of the reapproval of the site tonight and that relief for the parking requirement. It's about a half acre site. The parking field is in front of the building between the road and the building. It is a site that has 97% impervious cover. However, that is an existing non-conforming condition. I also note that there are several of those kind of existing non-conforming setbacks or impervious that are, that were approved in 2003. So, I mean, I would assume it would carry on forward to today. Nonetheless, the main issue of this application is parking. We have presented to the board a list of the hours. This should have been submitted with your packets. I know it came like a little later than some of the other things, but it was provided at least 10 days ahead of this meeting. And this summarizes what was already put on the record about the hours of operation and the number of instructors, the class times. And I think that this pretty clearly shows why these three uses can coexist and not have a parking problem with the existing 17 spaces as opposed to the required 23 spaces. I also do want to point out that a portion of the building is two stories, and on that second story is the residential unit. It's an apartment, I think the owner lives there. It's two bedrooms, and that was part of the 2003 approval to combine that from two separate apartments to one unit with two bedrooms. There are, there's enough room in the garage to stack two cars in the garage. So that's why in your calculations, you may not see that residential, that parking, because it kind of negates itself. But we will include that in any revised plan. I want to show you this exhibit. This is different than what was presented.
So we're going to label that as A1? And is there a date on that?
It's today's date, September 3rd, 2025, A1.
And that was not submitted yet to the board?
That's correct. It's a new exhibit. It's titled, well, it's titled Minor Site Plan. And it shows the existing conditions, which is basically the survey that was submitted to you. And then on the right, it shows a one inch equals 10 feet scale of the front parking field and a part of the side of the parking. What this does is, this shows the dimensions of the existing parking layout. You notice all the other text is taking off and everything. So it's going to help me explain to you what the parking field, how it's laid out today. It also has a zoning analysis chart that was not previously submitted, but it was brought up in the planner's report that that should be submitted. So as a condition of any approval, we would agree to provide these. This also has a signature line for the planning board if it should get approved. So what I wanted to first point out was about the parking field. The parking stalls currently are not head in toward the building. They are head in toward each other, and this is important because you don't want to have the risk of an errant car hitting the building. So that's why the owner prefers the parking this way, which I think works really well. It has two ADA compliant spaces with the correct aisle width. The parking spaces are nine feet by 16.6 feet in the topmost row here. Eight point nine feet by 18.6 feet. And then along the southern property line, we have parking spaces that are nine foot by 18.6. And then the parallel parking spaces are 20.3 feet by nine feet and 19.7 feet by nine feet. So, long story short, they are, they do fall short of the required nine by 20 spaces. So the applicant is asking for continued relief on that existing condition as well. The parking aisles on the northernmost between, between the end of the parking stall and the northern property line, there's actually a line stripe there, which is just inside of the property line. But to that line stripe is 28.2 feet, so that is plenty, more than the 24 that's required. The space between the front curb and the parking spaces, that distance is 19.6. So that would allow two cars to pass by each other in the infrequent time that that would happen. And then we have a 17.3 foot access aisle between two parking spaces in the southern area, and then 18.2 feet between the building and the two parallel parking spaces. The parking works the way it is. You know, we have, the owner has been here for many years, it's never been an issue with cars on the road or cars parking, not having enough room to park. So we would request that it stays the way it is today. There are two access points into the property from Woodport Road, and we do want to keep both of them open the way it is. If there's no other questions about the layout or the parking, I can move on to the next point of the site plan, which is the signs.
I do have a question about the parking. When the Super 711 is completed, I mean, currently, that, that... When that Super 711 is completed, will there be a barrier between the 711 and this building's, the lot line there? Or will cars, after they fill up, go through this parking lot out on to Woodport Road?
I haven't looked at the 711 site plan, but I do, I'm pretty sure that while it's under construction at least, they have these orange, like jersey, orange and white jersey barriers. So right now it is blocked off. We have not proposed any blockades, but I don't know if they are or not. That's something we may consider, I mean, if we think it's important. I should mention, it's also, there's no barriers between the northern property and the property in question, and I think that's important to keep at least that one open because they have access to the rear of their building along the property line.
That's Sparta Tire to the...
Sparta Tire is actually one building away.
Oh, that's right, that's a new building.
Right, right.
Just thought I'd point it out, leave it up to the board. Thank you.
Since we're on parking.
Excuse me?
Since we're on parking, I did have some questions to that as well. There's going to be overlap. I mean, you're saying the times are 4:50 to 8:20. Other businesses may be open till 5:00, 5:30, 6:00, I don't know. And you have kids, parents coming in, they drop kids off early for these classes, so you're talking maybe 4:30. And there just aren't enough spots, so they're going to be circling with nowhere to park. And how, what do you say to that?
I would say that that condition is not likely to happen at all because of the number of employees that are currently in State Farm, there's only three. And the number of employees at the tailor, I was told by the owner, is usually just one. And sometimes two, rarely. So you only have four parking spaces taken up by the owners, or employees, sorry. And that leaves 13 additional spaces for five to 10 students coming in and out. So I think that there won't be a conflict.
But keep in mind that if there's a variance, it will run with the building, and other businesses will be coming in in the future, so we have to just, you know, look at the standards as they are because it is a potential that someone else can come in and require that and run into that problem later.
That's correct. Someone else with perhaps a different schedule or more employees could come in. But perhaps we could make it a condition of the resolution, just like the 2003, that the owner would have to come into the board and explain why and how the parking would work with 17 spaces or...
Similar to why we're here this evening.
Yeah.
For this exact same reason, but we're coming here with something that works. Fewer students, fewer cars, I, you know, and I think, I think it makes sense if there was something that had a higher frequency, that you might give more thought to the parking. But under the current circumstances, it's likely we're never going to exceed the parking that's provided by the site.
Counsel, is the owner here? You said the owner?
Yes, Master Ken. But, so...
Can we have him testify that he'd be okay with that condition?
He's very hard of hearing and doesn't understand the English language that well. That's why Master Ken's here this evening.
Can Master Ken translate for him?
Yes, yes.
He's got to scream to him, just so you know, counsel.
That's okay. That's fine, that's fine, thank you. The Islamic swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God or affirm. Tell the truth. Yes, thank you. And as far as, can you explain to him that as the existing condition, a new tenant comes in, he was kind enough in the past or his predecessor to put that as a condition, would he be okay as the owner if a new tenant comes in, that same condition continues by way of, he would have to come back before the board, as we're doing right now? Right, if a new tenant comes in, that's fine. Thank you, I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
I think to the point on parking, you know, years ago, across the street there from this location, there was a martial arts studio. But of course, there also was a deli and a paint store and a health food store, which had high volume of people, and there was parking wars there. So that's really why we're concerned about this. I agree with you with the current businesses that are there, I don't see the conflict. But certainly one that had higher foot traffic could then, you know, cause an issue.
Certainly, yeah. And I did discuss this with my clients prior to tonight's meeting, and if we had to go there, we were going to go there, so we get it.
Thank you, counsel.
Understood.
Okay, so as was probably mentioned before, there's no site improvements or improvements inside or outside the building with the exception of proposed signage upgrades that need some relief as far as the sign area. There was a document of the proposed signs that was submitted to the board. I'd like to put them on the display.
These are the same documents that were submitted.
Even though submitted, if you wouldn't mind, just mark the one up.
A2.
A2, thank you, counsel, and the other?
And A3.
Thank you. And if you could put today's date on it after A2 and A3 and your initials, please. And if you can make sure A1 has the same today's date and your initials. Thank you.
I'll do it.
So A2 is a document, an illustrative document prepared by EM Signs. It's, it shows the non-illuminated post and panel sign, or what I call the freestanding sign replacement that's going to be, that is there today, and this would replace the existing sign. A3 is also an illustrated document that shows proposed non-illuminated dimensional building lettering, which, I'll start with A3 because it shows what signs are going to be going on the building. The first is the existing State Farm sign with a State Farm logo. That was, I assume, already approved, that is existing, has been there for a long time. The bacon space, which is between the two occupied spaces, is a Taekwondo, and very simply, I was just going to say that in red lettering, 12 inches high and 11 point, I'm sorry, 9.8 feet long. The existing tailor sign would just be clean. The existing tailor sign would just be cleaned, that's going to stay as it is. And then there's another proposed sign at this mansard of the right side of the building that identifies the building as one sixty Woodport Road. That will replace an existing, much smaller sign toward the, just above the board, just above the door, that says one sixty Woodport Road. The relief we would be asking for is for the sign length. The ordinance for signs in the C one zone says that you can only have a sign twelve foot long or fifty percent of the wall length. So, and you are allowed to have multiple signs on a building. But the wall length is the question, that's, that's a little bit of a gray area. So I'm going to, I think, take the conservative approach. The architectural plans that were submitted by Elizabeth Reeves, they, they show the, they show these columns. And I measured, I scaled their drawing, and it's twenty feet each column. So fifty percent of that would be ten feet. So the maximum length of the sign would, is ten feet required. And we're proposing nine point eight feet for taekwondo, which, which works. And we have fourteen, just under nine feet for the Woodport Road. So actually, those are, those are conforming. The total, the, the total area of all the signs on the building is thirty-five point five. And if we take the facade of the, the facade area of the building, and five percent of that would be sixty-four point four. So we have a total of thirty-five point five square feet, which is less than sixty-four point four. So unless I missed something, I think it's conforming. Unless we, we add everything together, it may be more than fifty percent. But my testimony is this. In the C one zone, we have a twenty-five foot front yard setback. And I think that when, when the master plan was probably written about this zone, it pictured the buildings much closer to, to Woodport Road. This is about over sixty feet away from the road. And I think the size of the signs is appropriate to scale and identification for this building. For the freestanding sign, that is twenty-eight point one two square feet. And I think it's allowed to be twelve square feet. But that's an existing sign that was previously approved. And the, the owner is just changing the layout of the sign. Not so much the shape and the size. I will also note that the sign is just eight feet. So, or just about a quarter inch, less than eight feet, according to the dimensions of the proposal, which is just under your, your allowed height for that sign. Your area below the sign, the open area for, for a site view, is that, that's going to stay the same? Yes. Yeah, that's, that's not getting any lower or higher. So that's, that pretty much explains the site plan. If you want me to provide some proofs, or if you want to go over your professionals' letters first, to you, Madam Chair.
I think we will move it to professionals first. Mr. Simmons, if you wouldn't mind.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just referring to the report our office prepared dated July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. The first page basically is the applicant's described. We've got the State Farm insurance, the proposed taekwondo unit, the tailor, and a second floor apartment that was described tonight as a two-bedroom apartment. With regards to the zoning, there's no site or building changes proposed other than the signage and some miscellaneous items that were discussed tonight. Parking was described, and I think it's probably obvious, but the applicant should confirm, as I noted in item number four, that there's no loading dock required for the taekwondo, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And they did bring up the substandard aisle width and parking space sizes that they enunciated earlier as far as not meeting precisely the nine by twenty requirements, or in some places, the twenty-four foot wide aisle width for two-way traffic. With regards to stormwater, again, there's no change in the site, so there's no increase in impervious. So that's not an issue as far as adding. They're not proposing any change in the exterior lighting. The existing building is serviced by water from the township water system. It's my understanding that there was a common water service line for that building, plus a couple additional buildings in that general strip. And I just want to have the applicant update the board on the status, if that's been rectified to everyone's satisfaction, including specifically in the township water departments.
Okay, we'll have to look into that, the water line.
Okay. And with regards to the septic system, again, I would just recommend that any approval the board might consider be subject to the Health Department issuing a letter indicating that the existing septic system is satisfactory for all the proposed uses on the site.
No objection.
With regards to landscaping, there's no change proposed. With regards to the architectural plans, I didn't have any at the initial point, but I don't believe there's any change other than the signage on the existing building, which they described here tonight. There's no environmental impact statement involved. And the items that I list under item number twelve for miscellaneous, County Health Department, the Fire Prevention Bureau, the Construction Official, for any modifications to the building interior, and the Water Department with regards to the water service line, to make sure that's properly rectified to the Township Water Department's satisfaction. And that's my report, Madam Chair.
And I think the only one of those that we received correspondence from was Sparta Township Police Department. We received that today. And it specifically referenced the parking, and that was the concern. And in addition to the parking, it referenced the residential units that we've discussed here this evening, and that there is parking for them in the back in the garage.
I'm sorry, one, one other item, just to make sure it's on the record and is clear. With regards to square footage, is there any basement in this building?
I'm, I'm not aware of any basement. The architecturals that were submitted only, only showed the layout with the apartment and the, the studios, and the studio and the.
But there's no occupancy, if there is a basement?
Oh, no, absolutely not.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Can we just confirm that through the translator?
Yeah.
Thank you. So noted.
Sorry.
No, no, it's a good one. I just have a couple more questions regarding kind of operational items, specifically regarding deliveries and refuse collection. And how many like anticipated deliveries beyond, do you expect anything beyond your basic kind of like Amazon, UPS, FedEx?
I saw the mailbox outside, and also the owner will collect pretty much. But I have, since I have, I have another location, most of them will deliver to the other side. I can manage that. And also, another thing is that I, now I understand about the parking concern. Most of other karate schools, they go by like a couple of classes a day. So they have a parking problem. So which means like, one class is like fifteen to twenty people coming. But we have actually, I'm sorry. This scheduling is very important. So what I'm doing is every, every single day, I count the students, how many people coming each belt. I saw by the, the different belt level, so trying to make it even now, so I can teach better. So that's why it's not, not going to help, you know, happen like, I try not to. In case like one class is getting bigger, I'm going to split. So like make a smaller group. And normally what happens is, um, depends on like back to school, like September or January, class, like beginning of class is bigger, because a lot of people join, and then getting smaller. So I change it to buy, you know, different sizes. So based on, as long as I follow the scheduling, it not going to happen those kind of parking problem. As I said, like if there's more parking problem, I wish, you know, I have a lot of students, but it not going to happen that way. But I'm going to make, you know, I pretty much like separate them. So it not going to too much crowded. And also big events, if I have, I have another location, I'm going to do those kind of events, like Halloween party or something like that.
So, yeah, so, so Master Ken, just to confirm, there's not going to be more than ten students per class?
Even, even now, I have Sunday class. The first, no, white, yellow bell class, age group is very young. So I tried to, even though three kids coming, I just let them, just, so I can help them more. And the other classes are like five to between ten. So I tried to make it as small as possible, yes.
But just to confirm, the, the maximum number is ten per class?
I tried to make it to as small as possible, yes.
Thank you.
You know, less than ten.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
So is there a dumpster on site, or how is?
Yes.
Yes, there is. If you look at the existing conditions map, you come in from Woodport Road on the southern part of the property and go straight back, there's a garbage enclosure, enclosure along, I guess, the south property line by the, by the corner of the property.
Okay, and the tenant will utilize that, obviously?
Excuse me?
The tenant will utilize the dumpster?
Yes, for, for the limited refuse that they produce, yes.
And then finally, we didn't really go over the interior modifications and the amount of demolition that will occur, and then kind of what the modifications will be within the site. So if you could just walk through what is being done within the interior?
There, there's no changes to the interior.
No changes, all right?
Nope, that's why our architect does not hear this evening.
Perfect, yeah, makes sense.
The plans that were submitted are just existing conditions plan that the architect measured and produced, so the board could see how the spaces were used. The, the taekwondo space has its own restroom that's ADA accessible, that's already been, that's already been built, so.
Perfect, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, let's bring it up to the dais. Any questions?
I'm just curious about something, if I may. This is Chris. Do the parents tend to stay there? Or do they drop off and come back and pick up? I'm just, would like clarification on that.
So normally, first day, I let them watch, because in case the kids like young age, like sometimes they cry, so I don't want them to. But after first class, I recommend them to not to watch, because that way the kids, they can focus better. Actually, they can build a lot of confidence with our parents. I mean, that they get a lot of, lot of positive things with our parents. Yeah, sometimes, even like the other location, one time I did open class and I made a huge mistake. A lot of parents coaching them, so. It was like not one parent, a lot of parents there. So I have to deal with the parents and also the student. And some young kids, they have to run to the parents and hug and they come back. I can't even teach, because I really want them to learn about discipline. So to me, I don't want the parents, the first class, at least they know what's going on, how they learn about. So I explain, and then they see, and then after that, I don't want them to watch. But I take pictures, what they're doing, and they post on Facebook or SNS.
So Master Ken, it's your testimony this evening that, that the parents generally will stay to watch just the first class, and then subsequent that you would suggest that the parents not stay there. Where they go, if they're not in the class, you do not know, but you don't want them there?
No, not inside, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, appreciate it. The other question I have is for Mr. Dunn. I was a little unclear on how you described the large sign, and I guess on the entryway, I'm talking about this one right here. Are you, you said you're moving the lettering to be above the door where you go inside, or did I misunderstand?
The, there's an existing building identification address that says one sixty Woodport, just above this doorway. That's going to be removed and then replaced with this larger lettering that says one sixty Woodport Road. The lettering as it is now is very small, it's hard to read, so for building identification purposes.
So you removed those, we can't really see it on our, our picture, but there is,
Yeah.
where there could be a, a sign there identifying the, the location. So, okay, so, but the, what we're seeing here with the proposed signage
Right.
is, is where it will be.
Yes, that's correct.
Only on the building. And then the sign out front.
Yes.
Somewhere I read three signs.
Others, oh, there's three signs identifying the tenants, but then there's the address sign for.
Address sign on the building and out front, okay.
Yes.
Thank you for clarifying, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Any other questions from the dais?
I have some questions. No questions.
Well, I was gonna, but by all means.
With regard to the freestanding sign, I just want to, I know we haven't always followed this, but I do want to call it to the board's attention, because I think it's something that they have to consider if they're going to waive it. The ordinance says that the use of freestanding sign near the roadway should not be used to list individual tenants located within the building or complex, but instead should serve as a site identification sign. And that is in eighteen dash five point three M two.
Is that in general, general sign design standards?
Mr. Dunn, the existing sign though does have the tenants on it, is that correct?
Yes, right, but it's going to be replaced, taken down. And anytime a sign is replaced or moved, it has to follow the current code. So I'm just calling it to everybody's attention.
If, I, I think that, that may, that may apply here. The only, the only reason I would question it is I know that there's a specific sign criteria for the C one zone. And I don't know if which one applies.
They both do, so you have the regular design standards, and then there are additional standards depending on the zone. Yeah.
For each zone, right. Okay, so, yes, we would, we would ask for relief on that.
Okay.
I think it's important to identify each tenant from, from Woodport Road. And I don't think it's too busy.
Pardon? If you wouldn't mind expanding on, on the code?
Um, yeah, let me just find it again. Eighteen five three.
M two.
Say it again? M two?
While you're looking for that, is the existing sign is being totally replaced? Is the existing sign, a new sign's coming up, same location though?
Yes, it's going to be redone.
But same dimension as the old sign?
Yes, that's correct.
Got it, thank you.
In the interim, I actually had a question.
I wasn't done, but I was just waiting.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, but I just figured while that was happening, because my question is about the parking and not about the sign. I was just going to ask you if you wouldn't mind taking a moment to expand on the parking behind the building for the residents above, so that we can understand how that works.
So on this exhibit, we're looking at the exhibit A one and the existing conditions map. Woodport Road is on the right side of the map here. What Dan is saying about the, the rear parking, it actually refers to the parking that's in the garage in the rear of the building. The two-story portion is actually about, I think it's like sixteen hundred square feet, and it's this narrow piece here depicted by the dotted lines. So the garage is, is actually at the very rear of the building. But to, to get to it, you have to turn from the side of the, of the property into the side of the building. Does that make sense? And it is, it's two cars, one then another.
And that's inside the garage?
Yes.
Yep.
It's attached to the building, or it's a separate building?
It's in the building.
Attached, okay.
So that section of the ordinance is in conjunction with the regulations for the zone. In addition, the section there says, "If and when any sign is altered, moved, or replaced, but not including minor or non-structural maintenance and or repairs, the changed sign shall conform to all requirements of this chapter." So are you taking down the entire sign?
No.
No, I think they're just refacing it, they're keeping the same posts and repainting it.
That's what it said.
That's M.
Well, you're requesting a waiver or?
We are, if that isn't the case, if that is the case, we're requesting.
No sign or post removed and discarded. A brand-new signed post and caps would be furnished.
It's the same.
Well, they just said on the record that they would request that. Well, they just said on the record that they would request that variance relief as well, so I think that's been solved.
Okay.
Okay. Next thing, I'd just like clarification on, this is not for you really, but it is an issue, because we come, we've had this many times at this board and we've denied other fitness centers. And fit, this meets the definition of a fitness center, no ifs, ands or buts really. And we have said that if it's not listed as a permitted use, it is therefore prohibited. This one is coming in as a sports center, which is indoor commercial recreation, that has a minimum of 50 spaces, but yet the fitness center is being used as the parking standard, so there seems to be some disconnect there and I just want legally some kind of an opinion as to what we're doing here since we have run into this before with different outcomes and I don't want to get caught.
So if the planner could, could address, if he could, the, I believe in the planner's testimony, you made reference to instructional students. If you can just give a little more planning testimony as to the use. I think you said studio use with a teacher, when you're talking about the parking.
Be the definition of fitness studio.
But yes, it's an instructional studio. And it goes under your ordinance permitted uses of sports center. That's, I agreed with what your planner had said about that, so having trouble finding.
Different uses though, and they have different parking standards, that's what's confusing in here.
I think, we did another application of Pinecone Plaza where that was a fitness center and I think, I know what you're talking about with that 50 minimum parking, I think we asked for relief on that as well. This is, I believe, a similar use although probably less intense than the women's gym that's there at Pinecone Plaza. So you may be correct, we may need relief from that as well, the 50 minimum, yes, sports center.
So I think there's two things at play. The first is the use, we've characterized it myself and I believe also the, I know Dory's offices as well have characterized this as a sports center, so for terms of use requirement and variances, that's why it's at the planning board and not the zoning board for, it's not requiring a use variance this evening. David, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but when it comes to parking calculations, I know many times you interpret the parking calculation as what it's most like and in terms of this, I believe indoor commercial recreation center is meant for a much more intensive use and that's most likely why I know I went with fitness studio verse.
I agree with that, it is a fitness studio because a fitness studio means an indoor fitness business with services limited solely to offering instructor or coach-led fitness or recreation classes, which may include activities such as karate, martial arts, wrestling, yoga, zumba, private skill and sports lessons and similar. Does not include tournaments, competitions, demonstrations with spectators like an indoor commercial sports center would. So it does meet the definition of a fitness studio, but a fitness studio is not listed as a permitted use in that area.
But I, I myself has, we've determined that it's a sports center, so that's why it's been brought to the planning board and that's why it doesn't.
True.
And well, I would say from a planning perspective, this is a sport and I would say this is where, I would assume Taekwondo is a sport, it's an Olympic sport, right?
Karate though.
Sure, but sports centers are permitted.
Karate's listed under fitness. I don't want to argue it, I'm bringing it up.
Well, just in.
Because I've had some other issues with this and quite honestly, Dory's department brought up fitness studios and is not a permitted use, so I don't want to get us into trouble down the road, I think we just need to address it.
Well, I think it's sports center and a sports center is permitted. We don't have a definition for sports center, the Moskowitz book, which you'll most likely will refer back to from a planning perspective as definition, does not have a definition for a sports center. So I go based on visiting the site, what's within the site, the character of that zone and then going back to the actual use, which is Taekwondo, which in my professional opinion is a sport.
And counsel, just for the record, your application's for a, a sports center, not for a fitness?
It's for a sports center, but with a fitness studio calculation for parking because of the limited size of the classes for the sports center.
Okay, but the use, we're looking at and following the planner and obviously the Sparta Building Department has placed you here as a permitted use.
As a sport.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Just one more legal question, if we granted a variance for this, is, is it possible to tie a variance to the lease so that if the Taekwondo moves out, the variance goes?
If you remember Joan, the owner came up and put on the record that he would, and the counsel affirmed that the same condition that is in place now as the new tenant, if it affects parking, would come back before the board, is that correct counsel?
That is correct, absolutely.
But would the variance go away for somebody else coming in?
I'm not so sure, it's a, that, in my opinion, the variance would not run with the property. The variance runs with the applicant and therefore I'm satisfied that if the variance by way of this occupancy and tenancy is triggered and the landlord has agreed to a new tenant review, it's not uncommon in other municipalities to have tenants come before the planning board for their review. The distinction would be in some other municipalities, it's kind of like your minor site plan review, there's no notice per se as long as there's no new variance. David, anything on that or?
No, I agree with what you just said.
Thank you.
Okay, so the variance will go with the lease?
It runs with the property, which runs with the lease, and if the tenant changes, then the lease would become void if it's a change in occupancy. If it went from a Taekwondo to, and I apologize, to some other type of fitness, defense, sport and it's the same hours and same conditions in my opinion, that they would come before the board, say that and then the board would grant the amended approval based upon what we're looking at today. And I hope I didn't confuse everybody by what I just said.
If it changes to a deli, then.
Right, right.
That's a better example, Artie, better example.
And Mr. Porro, wouldn't it have to come back for, a change of tenant would come back for a site plan anyways?
Yeah, that's what we're agreeing to, the applicant, yes, thank you.
So I think that's also in your regular ordinances, it was recently passed, is that correct? Any change in tenant has to come to the planning board anywhere?
Well, at least in the ED zone for sure.
Yeah.
But.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, did you have a question?
Well, so I just want to read, I think we're, we're saying the same thing, but the applicant shall return to the board for minor subdivision approval upon any change in tenancy or use of the building. At said minor site plan approval, the board shall review the applicant and the applicant shall demonstrate to the board satisfaction that adequate parking exists on the property for the proposed change in use or tenancy from 2003. We're structuring it similarly.
Yep.
Right, okay, thanks.
More questions from the dais?
All right, you have before you an application PB 25-731 TQP.
We have a public.
Ah, good point.
I knew we missed something.
Ah, that was a good one.
First day back. Opening up to the public.
Jenny Derrick's tapping this part, I just have a couple quick things. The first one is, is it, is? Where is my question, sorry. The current sign over the arched area of the building, of the facade, currently it has, yes, it does have a small indicator of the address, but larger with a design, it says humble threads. And so is it, is the tailor not going to be asking to have their identifier replicated somewhere?
As far as proposed sign document here, it doesn't show that humble thread sign?
Right, but this, I don't think, this is what they're proposing, it's not the current, existing.
Yeah, it's just gonna be identified as the tailor.
It's just gonna say tailor, humble threads doesn't want to have their identification anymore. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Hi, I live on Hunter's Lane directly across the street from the 7-Eleven, so I can see the progress.
Just your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, Florence Slack, 25 Hunter's Lane, so I can see the progress every day that's being done. My concern, and maybe you mentioned it because I'm trying to absorb everything, but Hunter's Lane entrance will be closed off, it'll be simply Woodport and Pinecone Lane for vehicles to come in and out. And Hunter's Lane will be closed up.
You're talking about the 7-Eleven?
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. I'm saying that because so many times when I back my car out of my driveway, I have to look three ways, left, right and directly behind me, because I could put my car in reverse and just pull right into the 7-Eleven. People don't stop, they don't slow down and so far there's been no accidents, but I just feel like every day I'm taking a chance when I'm trying to get out of my driveway and so I just want to make sure that that, that part will be closed off so I don't have to deal with it anymore.
That, that whole, that whole site plan was heard by the zoning board, not by this board.
Oh, okay.
Correct, Mr. Simmons?
Yeah, I was gonna say, if I may, just talking about the 7-Eleven, when it's completely done, there is no access coming off of Hunter's Lane for that application, it's gonna be on Pinecone Lane and off of Woodport Road.
Okay, perfect. And also like the signage, whatever signage goes up that may be lit up, just to make sure it's not like really bright. You know, the way the sign is right now with the 7-Eleven up by the corner of Pinecone, that's fine, you know, it doesn't bother me, but I just don't want something really bright because I have to look out my window, you know what I mean? It's, you know, a lot of the lights come in through my window, I can see the pole lights across the street where the nursery center is, so I just don't want one more thing that's gonna, you know, shine in my face when I, you know, when I'm sitting in my living room. And also the store, is that gonna be facing, the 7-Eleven store, is that gonna be facing Woodport Road when it's finished?
The new convenience store for the 7-Eleven, the front of the store is going to be facing Woodport Road and the gasoline service dispensing station portion of the project is closer to Woodport Road as well.
Okay, good, great, thank you.
Jamie, can you answer that question? Is, I mean, that, that whole area is paved pretty much from Sparta Tire all the way to the subject site. Is, is the pavement from the 7-Eleven going to be attached to this site? I mean, are people gonna be all?
I, I would have to double check it, but to the best of my recollection here tonight, there's gonna be a landscape buffer between, called the northerly side of the new 7-Eleven by the gas station and the applicant's property, so you will not drive across there.
I'd hope so, right?
That's kind of my experience too, 7-Eleven wouldn't want the adjacent properties going through.
No, there's gonna be a lot of, well, there's gonna be traffic circulating for the gas pumps and that type of thing.
Hi, Mike Devine, Oak Parkway. My inclination always is to be very welcoming to uses that I think are desirable. I think this fits that category perfectly, so I'm hoping that this will come to be. I think it's very desirable. One question which may not apply, I'm assuming you're gonna have mats and physical activity, maybe noise in your location at Hamburg, has that ever been an issue with any adjacent properties? You follow my question? Yeah, but you throwing people around and yelling, I mean, I'm picturing.
Yelling, I mean, martial school, so we probably yell.
But you're not gonna have hours that overlap with adjacent properties, I don't think. In other words, you have, you have common walls with two other businesses, right? So any, any activity inside your location would not interfere with what?
Oh, yes, that's why I changed my time to starting at 4:15.
Okay. Good luck, I hope you work out.
Just for the record, that was Mike Devine, correct Mike?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public?
All right, close to the public.
Mr. Porro?
Yes, we have application 25-731 before us, TQP Services Inc., 160 Woodport Road, Block 2016, Lot 11, C1 Zone for amended site plan represented by counsel. There were three witnesses in support of the application, the planner, the tenant and the property owner and there was testimony as to the hours of operation. There was also discussion of the parking requirements and also the stall sides. We have waivers or variances as far as the stall size, as far as the number of parking spaces and again, there was quite a bit of testimony on the, the use that creates that parking variance and we talked about the sign variances also and the possible application of 18-5.3 M2. So before you again, in some you have an application for waiver or variance on parking stall sides, on the number parking spaces requirement and on signage and you've placed as a condition, if you were to approve, that any tenant change is subject to an amended site plan before this board. Let me just check my notes, I think that was also that you would require.
Does it have something to add?
You were to require with the reasonable conditions of the board, planner and the board engineer. David, anything else?
Just two items, I believe there was a waiver of variance required for some areas of aisle width in addition to parking stall size and a suggestion I'd have if the applicant will agree, they indicated that the upstairs residential tenant was parking in the garage, I would suggest that they make, you make that a condition so that it frees up the maximum number of parking spaces in the parking field.
No objection.
So counsel, go ahead.
And the location of the sign, the freestanding sign?
In the same location.
Uh-huh, the freestanding sign having multiple, multi-tenants.
Instead of just the street address?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, and anything that I read contrary to your notes?
No, just the water line, I have to get that information from Mr. Simmons and I also need to contact the Sussex County Health Department, make sure that that's applicable, but that's part of his, his report, so.
Great, so.
I just have one quick question of Mr. Simmons and Ms. Knight before, before we push this to a vote. Given the, the current testimony and given the, the explanations with regard to your reports and your initial concerns, do you see anything at this stage that gives you pause with, with, with regard to the parking situation?
Based on the information provided by the applicant's planner, Mr. Dunn, with the times involved and the limited days and the limited number of students involved for this particular operation, I find it satisfactory.
Ms. Knight, do you concur?
Yes, and I would like to just add the information they gave us regarding the other businesses and the number of employees, I think further shows that potentially some of the parking spaces that are required for the other spaces, the other locations or tenants are not necessarily being utilized by them, so there's additional spaces for those as well.
Thank you.
Ready for a vote?
Yes, we are ready for a vote.
If someone would move it in second?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Birgit Bogler? Yes. Jeanette Burr?
Yes.
Joan Furman?
Yes.
Ernie Rogstad?
Yes.
Councilman Mark Scott?
Yes, I welcome Mr. Lee.
Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Christine Dunbar?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Robert Otto?
Yes.
Chairwoman Les Luciano?
Yes, welcome.
All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, have a good evening.
You too. Okay. Uh, okay, so five-minute recess before we start on our next hearing.
Okay, so five-minute recess before we start on our next hearing.
Good evening. Frank McGovern of McGovern &amp; Roseman. You probably did not expect me to appear tonight. Either Megan Ward or Kevin Kelly were supposed to be here, but neither of them could make it. So they asked me to step in. So please be gentle with me. Trying to be a fast learner, but not that fast. I did have an opportunity to review the application and to speak with the applicant. And if I could, if I could just give a little summary.
Yeah, so first, would you mind the microphone, please? The handheld if you're going to stand. And Mr. Porof, if you wouldn't mind getting his credentials?
Yes, so Frank, you're the attorney, licensed attorney of the state of New Jersey?
That's correct.
And your license is in good standing?
That's right, I hope so. Can you hear me through this?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we're good. Yeah, just a little closer to your mouth.
Okay.
Perfect.
All right. So in general, the applicant here today is Papa's For Rentals, which is owned by Mary Jean Negri, Dr. Negri, who's with me here. The property in question is on Route 15. I'm sure you're all very familiar with it. It was the old Paparoni's property. There's several buildings on that property. And what this application is, is actually, I guess, in concept, it's extremely simple, at least from our point of view. It's a tenant changeover. The one is the Paparoni's, the old Paparoni's Restaurant, which went through several restaurant phases. There's now a new business coming in called Sparta Mediterranean Cuisine. And then the other location, which is right next to it, also along Route 15, was formerly a computer service shop, and before that, a Verizon store. And now we propose to have a new tenant in there. He's actually in there. He'd actually already gotten a zoning permit. And that is the Sparta Smoke Shop. From our point of view, this is really just a changeover from a permitted tenant, what was permitted under the prior ordinances of what was the ED zone through variances, and now permitted in the PCED zone, to another replacement tenant. The parking spots remain the same, there's no changes in parking. And the signage, in terms of dimensions and type and rules applying to the signage, those all remain the same as well. The only thing changing with the signage would be really just the names. The one would be the Sparta Mediterranean Cuisine. And of course, the other would be the Sparta Smoke Shop. There's a facade sign on the side of the Sparta Smoke Shop. Again, same dimensions, just a changeover in the sign. And then there's a facade sign on the restaurant as well. And again, just a changeover on the sign as well. And then there's also a freestanding sign, which has the, will be changed over from the prior restaurant to the new one. And then also some LED signage as well. With that, I do have some questions for Dr. Negri, if you want to sort her in.
Yes. Yes, I'm gonna swear to tell the whole of the truth. So you got it. Name and professional address for the record, please.
My name? Is it on? Yeah, my name is Mary Jean Negri. And I am actually a chiropractor in Lafayette, New Jersey. And I own the property known as 514 Lafayette Road. My husband used to own Paparoni's. We bought the property in 1992. He passed away suddenly in 2013, and that's why I am involved here.
Okay, Dr. Negri, and how long have, I guess, between you and your companies, how long have you and your husband and now you own the properties?
Since 1992.
Okay. And from very early on, you started to have a restaurant operated on the property?
Correct, my husband did, yes, I was not involved.
Okay, and that was Paparoni's?
Paparoni's, yep.
And for how many years did that operate?
Until 2013, when he passed away.
Okay, and then afterwards, another restaurant came in?
It did, yes.
And that was Anastasia?
That was Anastasia's restaurant, and that lasted about one year.
Okay, and that was operated by your daughter?
My daughter. My daughter worked in the restaurant business with my husband for many years.
All right, and after that, another restaurant came in?
Correct.
And that was Casa Capri?
Casa Capri.
And then how long was that there?
I believe three years.
Okay. And then finally, there was a Mexican restaurant, Taquera Tulum?
Taquera Tulum, correct.
And then how long was that there?
That was there, I believe, two years.
Okay. And then, so when did that stop operating?
Last October is when he moved out.
All right, so the place has been not being used as a restaurant or for anything since then?
Correct.
All right, and now you have a new tenant that you would like to operate in that space?
Yes, a Mediterranean restaurant with a great menu and some healthier choices.
Okay. And have you already signed a lease with that company?
I have, yes.
All right, and when were you expecting the company to have already started operation there?
Oh, yes, many months ago, but...
And if an approval is given today by the board, are they prepared and ready to go forward?
Absolutely, they've already had their Sussex County Health Department inspection, their fire inspections, everything is ready to go.
And then adjoining the building is another area that's used by the smoke shop?
That is correct.
All right, and just give a brief history, that was used previously by Verizon?
A computer store, yes, Verizon initially.
Okay.
And then it was a computer repair store.
All right.
And he retired and went out. And now hopefully, we can get things moving with the smoke shop.
Okay, and the smoke shop is in business now?
It is, but it's not doing well because it is not allowed to put up a sign yet.
Which is one of the things you're asking for today?
That is correct.
Right. And you've reviewed this matter with the owner of the smoke shop, correct?
Yes, I have.
And you're familiar with the operation?
I am.
And how many employees do they need to operate based on what you observed and...
One employee, they basically have one employee.
Okay, and then in terms of traffic, how much, how much business?
They're expecting to start one to three an hour. And they're usually in and out in a quick period of time.
Okay, and then flipping back to the restaurant, in terms of the eating and service area of the restaurant, is that going to change at all?
Nothing has changed, no construction, nothing has changed. Just updated painting and refreshing.
Okay. And then, so for the board's use, Mr. Kevin Kelly and Megan Ward had submitted an application package. So I'm relying very heavily on that. And would like to, I guess, generally submit that into evidence. And just kind of maybe give you an overview of what's in it?
Please.
If that's okay? So obviously, the application itself is there. The applicant seeks to bring in these two tenants for these uses, which our position is that it's consistent with what is permitted. In fact, that they are permitted in the zone. And without really any, without any changes other than the signage itself. Based on the presentation that was made to you earlier tonight, and I was educated a little on that one provision of the sign ordinance that any new signage that comes in triggers a requirement of compliance with all of the current requirements of the sign requirements of the zone. I just want to make sure, if required, that there be a waiver so that the signs that are required, that are needed and requested for the restaurant, identify the restaurant itself, and that the signage for the smoke shop identify the smoke shop itself.
So noted.
Thank you. So in the application, you'll see an overview and then a series of exhibits. The main point of this is to emphasize that calculations were made over the years. Many, many applications have been made, usually when there have been changes in tenants, to get approvals, to get permission to be able to have signage, and to indicate the number of parking, I guess. The calculations with regard to the restaurant that have been made indicate that with the 800 square feet of space and the number of seats in the restaurant, using the formula that's in the ordinance, that there be either 16 or 18 required spaces which are dedicated to the restaurant use. And so are there 18 spaces? And so are there 18 spaces dedicated to the restaurant use?
Yes, there is.
Okay. And that's been the case since Paparoni's?
Since 1992. Nothing's been changed.
Okay. And then with regard to the smoke shop area, again, a calculation was made based on the square footage of 1,500 square feet, that there would be at least seven and a half spaces available. And based on the calculations made and the site plan that is also from 2015 that was presented as part of this package, there are eight dedicated spaces for that smoke shop area. And is that correct? Are there eight spaces for that?
I believe there's seven. I'm not sure, though. I'd have to see the plans again.
Okay. Sorry.
I don't remember, to be honest with you. Because Alan Campbell had it all figured out. Does it say up here?
So we're looking at the last page of the package?
I need my glasses.
Exhibit D at the end is a copy of the 2015 site plan by Alan Campbell.
I can't see the door.
Sure. Unfortunately, the print is very small. But what we can see, everybody's looking at it is, it depicts...
Eight spaces.
Route 15, and it shows the two buildings, which are the buildings right up against Route 15 with the parking in the front, correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay. And then, and then the unit that's in question was previously, was labeled at the time as Computer Urgent Care, correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay. And then, so the spaces here, okay?
Or...
Five, six, seven.
Yep.
What's that? Is that a...
That's a handicapped, right there, yes.
Okay. So it'll be, oh, that's a handicap space?
Yep.
Okay. Eight spaces?
That's what it looks, yes. That's what it looks like. I need thicker glasses.
Okay. And let the record show that Dr. Negri needs thicker glasses. So the position that we've taken is that the parking is sufficient for these uses, and that the uses themselves haven't changed. And then there is a, you do have a plan, correct, for the future?
Yes, we're working on an updated site plan. My engineer, Alan Campbell, and my architect, Charlie Schaefer, are working on updating it so that we can come, make it more clear and efficient for the other part of the property. So everything is spelled out.
And that's, okay, so... Then reviewed, Mr. Simmons had prepared a report and made some suggestions of areas of testimony that he would like to hear from, and would like the board to hear about. The one is on page three, paragraph five. The question has to do with the use of the restaurant building. So let's just take a look real fast at the package. On, in exhibit three A, at the end, right before exhibit B, there is a floor plan of the restaurant. You see that?
Yes, I do. I see that.
Okay. And that layout that you see in that floor plan, is that the existing layout as it has existed over the years?
Yes, it is.
And will anything change with that layout?
No, nothing's changing.
Okay. And you see the shaded area on the, on this floor plan, is that the seating and service and eating area?
Yes, that's the dining room and the seating area, yes.
And that's where the patrons come?
Correct.
Okay. And then the, explain what the use is for the balance of this area.
Well, as you come into the restaurant, to the left is the seating area. And then to the right is the prep area where they, sometimes they, in previous times, they made sandwiches. There used to be pizza ovens right up front there. There's a sink with a counter for coffee and soft drinks. And then you go back into the kitchen. And then outside the kitchen door is the freezer and refrigerators, commercial grade. There is an office off the kitchen that was for storage and had a little computer to keep track of inventory and stuff.
Okay.
Yep.
And then typically, how many people would work in this, for this, a restaurant of this size, over the years?
You know what? I was not involved in the restaurant, but I would say probably two servers, one at the counter, maybe five, five people.
Okay.
Roughly.
And I know you weren't running the restaurant, but your husband was?
Yes, he was, yep.
Your daughter was?
Yep.
And you actually observed the number of employees working there?
Correct, yes.
So does that number drive with your experience?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And then, did you ever see problems with overflow parking in the parking spaces that were set aside for this?
No, there was never a parking problem.
Okay.
And he was quite busy.
Okay. All right. And then, excuse me a second. Another question on Mr. Simmons's report, page three, paragraph five, B2. This has to do with the smoke shop, the number of employees and customers anticipated. And you've made inquiries about that and have actually observed the operation of the business?
I have. I've spoken with the owner, and they have one employee and possibly three people an hour, but, and they do come and go. It's not something where they stay in there a long period of time.
Have you witnessed at all any, the spaces, the eight spaces set aside for this being overused, or?
No, it's not been a problem.
Okay. And then with regard to the, it's now on page four of Mr. Simmons's report, this has to do with the signage, the freestanding sign in paragraph 11D. Well, let's, yeah, 11C. The LED portion of the freestanding sign, now that's something that's existed for many years?
I actually had that approved in 2015 when I came in front of the board.
Okay. And a copy of the resolution is included with the package. And that LED portion, is that just going to be used for, in connection with advertising for the Sparta Mediterranean Cuisine?
Yes, the restaurant is the sole user of that, and it has certain limitations. It cannot flash. It is turned off usually, I believe it's 11:00 PM, so that it is not lit at night. It does not move. It's, they may, yeah, it's basically, that's it.
Okay. And also, there's other limitations in letter D, only one color background and one color lettering with three lines of type maximum.
Correct.
All right. It will not be lit overnight?
That is correct.
The message will change, be changed once a week?
That is correct.
And the illumination letter levels are to be reviewed and approved by the board engineer?
Yes, they already, they were in 2015, and they have not changed.
Okay. And these are, you recall, these are conditions that are also included in the prior resolutions?
It absolutely was.
Okay. And, all right, and you want to say that these restrictions are to remain in effect?
Absolutely.
And again, with reference to the package, with regard to the smoke shop, the board could see in exhibit A, a few pages in, a depiction of the proposed Sparta Smoke Shop sign, and its intended location on the building itself, and then a comparison to the prior sign that was on that property. So this was, it appears to be prepared by E&amp;M Signs?
E&amp;M Signs, yes.
Okay. And did they work with you on that?
They worked with my tenants on that, yes. So that it was within specifications to be approved.
Okay. And you reviewed the sign yourself?
I have with them, yes.
And it's acceptable to you?
Yes.
Then, with regard to the restaurant site, and this is exhibit three A of the package, again, a few pages in, there is a depiction of a sign for Sparta Mediterranean Cuisine?
Yes.
All right. And again, who prepared that?
E&amp;M Signs.
And again, was that, was that done in collaboration with the restaurant owner?
Yes.
Okay. And again, you reviewed it and approved it?
I did, and I spoke with Ron. It's within the specifications that Sparta requires.
Okay. And then the next page shows, I guess, a depiction as it would look on the freestanding sign?
Yes.
And then the page after that shows the existing freestanding sign without any sign in that place, right?
Correct.
Counsel, while we're there, so the Computer Urgent Care is going to be replaced with the Smoke Shop signage?
That's correct.
And the physical therapy?
Let me just show Dr. Negri.
Yeah, that will remain the same.
Okay. Now, I did drive by the site. The physical ther, is that your operation?
No, there is a physical therapist that rents from me. She's in the back area. She's been there for many years.
See, the challenge, and one of the reasons the application unfortunately became delayed, is we're looking at a 2015 site plan, and that's very unusual. Especially when the site plan has tenants that are no longer there. And again, when I drove the site, the, it was, it's not like it's a freshly paved lot, that it was easy to see where the parking spaces were.
I understand, yeah. And that's why my engineer, my attorney, and Charlie Schaefer, we are working presently on a new site plan. We're hoping to get them opened with the smoke shop's new sign, the restaurant get opened, and then we're hoping to come in front of the board soon with the new site plan, so that Alan Campbell said, once the new one is done, it'll be very explicit as, so that when tenants come and go, it'll be a much easier process.
If I'm looking at the 2015 site plan, where is the physical therapist?
If you pull in the driveway as, right before the smoke shop, there is a building in the back on the right-hand side. And there are two tenants in there. The one is the physical therapist, and then there is a gal that rents a small office space for, she, above the rest transport, she transports people, whether it's elderly or people that need assistance with things.
And on the plane, it's noted it's office.
Yes, she is renting part of that space right now. There was a photographer in there, but they relocated to South Carolina, so that space is empty right now. And before we do anything with that, we're hoping, again, I want to make sure everything's in order, come in front of the board with a new site plan, so that everything is coherent and done correctly.
Is the office labeled four? Is that the physical therapist?
Put the agonizers on here.
Let me get my bearings. Yes, she is number four, yes.
Okay, so that's PT.
PT.
And 1A is this transporter person?
Correct. Above the rest transport, it's called, yes.
And number three, the former dwelling, there is no more residential there?
That's... That is above the rest home care. That is a separate business. They rent that Cedar Shake House. It's like home healthcare, and they hire nurses or LPNs to go help people out of their home. There's not a lot of people coming and going out of there, and there's usually one or two employees in there. Prior to that, it was a Realtor's office. And Alan Campbell had mentioned to me that the Realtor office required much more parking than what the tenant that is there now. But that, we're going to hopefully come back at a later date and get that all organized once we can get these guys up and running their businesses.
Since we're on that topic, may I ask a couple of questions?
Of course.
As we, you know, we met with you.
Yes.
We tried to see what we could do to move it along, and one of the questions was a listing of all the current tenants and trying to figure out the parking, which we never really got, so I'm glad we're going over that now. And I know now what is in each of these spaces, but can we go over the square footage then? So the restaurant was number one, and that's 52 seats. And I think everybody agrees it's one for every three seats, which would be 18 parking spaces.
That is correct.
Counsel, do you have, do you have Neglia's report in front of you? Neglia's report?
I do.
Do you have it? One second.
I think that one, John, I think Neglia's...
Well, I, that's, I had an issue with some of the numbers there, so I just want to go through each of the numbers so that we're all consistent here.
Okay.
Okay, so we have the restaurant, and that does show the 16, no, 16 spaces. I wrote 18, okay. Retail smoke shop, that's 1,500, and that's at a rate of one per 200, and that's listed as a number two. The 1A with 1,200 square feet, which was the photographer and the transport, I don't see on here. And I'm pulling the 1,200 square feet off of your latest, that you submitted your site So that one needs to be cleared up. And then the office, which, in number three, which was the old residential and is now above the rest health care, that's 2,800 square feet. And I don't, I think maybe, I don't know where that is on this chart either. It was hard to follow.
I understand.
And then the physical therapy is 800 square feet, not 1,800?
Probably about 800 square feet, that is correct.
So if we had 1,200 square feet, 1,500 square feet, 2,800 and 800, that's 6,300 square feet, with a ratio of one per 200 spaces, or one space per 200 square feet, that would come to 32 spaces for these businesses, plus the 16 for the restaurant. And compared to how many you have. And that's what we were trying to figure out then, and we're still, I guess, kind of trying to figure it out now, so today's a great day to do it.
Yes, okay. Yep. And again, Alan is addressing that as we speak.
Right, but we're here now.
I get it. I hear you, yep.
Yes, the way we're looking at it, we're looking at this not as a major site plan overhaul for the entire site, but really as a tenant change for two spots, where the parking requirements for those two spots had already been kind of sorted out over the years by the board.
When you look at a multi-tenant building, you have to take everything into consideration, particularly because so much had changed from here on here. These businesses don't exist anymore. So, you know, one of the things that we grappled with originally is when the smoke shop came in and said that there were going to be 30 patrons at any given time. So, you know, that kind of triggered everything too, and it was a change in use. It wasn't from a computer office space.
Did you say?
It then went to retail.
30?
So that triggered all of that.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, if we're looking at it now, my numbers come to we need 50 spaces.
I know Alan also spoke to me about, there's two spaces, he said that you could, we could have stacked cars, two cars for two spaces. And again, he mentioned that when the... And again, he mentioned that when the Realtor office left, the above-the-rest home care needed like a 2/3 less of what the Realtor office was required.
1 for every 200 square feet.
Whatever, okay, yeah. But part of that is a basement that they don't, it's more storage of, it's just a storage area in the basement. I don't know if that would include that area
Yeah.
in what we're talking, yeah, because there's nothing down there except for a bunch of my...
Well, you look at it as what is on the whole site because the tenants do change, and so we're looking at it, what it could be. So, we're looking at, I guess, 50 spots, and how many spaces do you have? Because I see 1 number 37, I see another 1...
I thought there was 47, if I'm not, but I might not be 100% correct on that, I believe.
I think the calculation was 45.
I found on section 3 of your exhibit, the second page of the Kelly and Ward letter that was given to the minor site plan, under 3 parking, you say there are 45 existing improved parking spots on the property. The current site plan was approved in 2015 and includes 45 total parking spaces, the option for 3 additional parking spaces to be stacked for employee use, and a waiver for 8 spaces associated with the real estate office approved to occupy the separate bungalow on the property. That's from March of 2025.
So the 2 tenant changes that we're asking for, I mean, really would be substituting one for another is, I guess, our position, that it's, it's not gonna make a difference.
If you look at the whole site plan, I guess, I see it on here too, now 45 versus 50, so that would require a variance.
So I think we should bring it to, to our professionals so that they can expand on, on everything that brought, that Joan has brought to light. So, Mr. Simmons, if you wouldn't mind, addressing your report.
Madam Chair and Board Members, just referring to the report we prepared dated August 1st, 2025, I would have to say that Mr. McGovern went over, through his testimony with Dr. Negri, most of the items that I had with regards to the parking. Based on the information that we were presented with and that I understand from the testimony tonight, I'm of the opinion that the restaurant is a restaurant substituting for the previous restaurant, and the smoke shop is similar in nature to the businesses that were there before. The one item that didn't get addressed in testimony, perhaps they could elaborate on, is item number 5C, the days and hours of operation for those 2 tenants, if they could provide them, please.
You spoke with the tenants, correct?
Yeah, but I can't testify, I can't testify, so...
Oh, okay.
So...
I believe the smoke shop is 9 to 9. Is that correct? And the restaurant, Ozzy, what are your hours going to be? 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM? Okay.
Okay.
For the restaurant.
7 days a week?
I believe both are 7 days a week, correct, gentlemen? Okay.
Okay. With regards to the site improvements, nothing changing as far as the lighting or the impervious covers, so there's no stormwater mitigation required. They're served by an existing well. The septic system, I understand Dr. Negri said that the county health department had inspected the facilities, and they can just provide verification that the existing septic system is still acceptable. They're not proposing any landscaping or architectural changes. With regards to the signage, again, the key thing that is from the previous resolution was the fact that there were specific guidelines as far as the LED electronic message board was concerned, and the applicant has agreed to comply with all them. And the other item that I wanted to make sure of was that the Sparta Mediterranean Cuisine Restaurant will be the only advertising on that board, not any other business in the area, which would basically possibly make it a billboard. So that's not the case there. From what I read from the information that was provided with regards to the smoke shop, the signage is basically going in the same general area, same general size. No EIS was required, there's nothing is going to be impacted as far as I could tell from the application documents. And with regards to approval, the county health department, which Dr. Negri mentioned, they've been out there, the fire prevention bureau, and obviously the construction official to make sure all the facilities are up to par as far as the restaurant and what have you is concerned. And those are my major comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Knight?
So, my major comments are kind of related to more housekeeping-type items. As Ms. Furman brought up, in our letter, we requested them to provide a breakdown of all the uses and the square footage to determine the exact number of parking spaces required because it was unclear from the site plan, since it is from 2015, and it's not to scale, so it is difficult to read. So that is kind of why there's a discrepancy between the parking, I believe, this evening. The additional items that we requested as well were a signage zoning table illustrating the signage that is being proposed. We were just given the dimensions for the smoke shop, and I think having some kind of table showing the dimensions with the zoning related to what is permitted, what is existing and what is proposed would be helpful in making a decision and confirming that they are compliant with the ordinance. In addition, there's a number of sign ordinances, as it was brought up earlier this evening. One of the biggest ones is there should be a sign plan submitted, which shows that all of the signs on site in a multi-tenant and multi-property, multiple buildings has signs that are integrated and coordinated. So I think that that would be kind of critical for this evening. I know signs are something that are pretty sensitive here in the township of Sparta, and I think that's important for the board to have, to be able to make a decision. My next question as well with the parking is they say there are 52 seats. However, if you look on Google Street View, there are additional 3 tables outside, so if we can confirm if those are additional seating that will be there permanently or not, because that will then increase the parking requirement. And then also, some kind of parking plan should be required so they can show how the spaces are delineated as well as ensuring that the spaces for each use are used properly, so that there's not, you know, parking, so we can make sure the parking spaces are distributed to the correct use. And the last question I have is just kind of functional. How deliveries are going to be handled between the 2 uses? Are they expecting any deliveries from larger trucks, and how they will circulate through the site? And also refuse, and how refuse is collected on site?
Do you agree with Joan's assessment with regard to, based on the information that we have for square footage for, for the parking at 50?
I would want, I would feel more comfortable with the applicant providing a breakdown of the parking and the uses on sites that we can fully confirm what is on the site, even if it's as simple as just an Excel document saying this use, this, this, and that. I think that would be helpful. Unfortunately, I know not much has changed on the site. The size of the building are the same, but I just want to confirm that the uses align with the parking requirement, and then the parking makes sense and the calculations are correct.
I agree. I'm looking at Google View on, on that property. I'm getting around 40 parking spaces, but it's hard to tell what is and what isn't, as you said. So I think we really need a...
Yeah, and I know that the applicant said they're working on a site plan, a new site plan, but maybe at this time it's as simple as just providing a breakdown Excel document where we can see physically what is on site, labeled the building, labeled the use, parking requirement, what they're proposing or what they have for that use. I think that would be very helpful.
If I could, Board. And again, I did drive by the site. I agree with, with David in that if you take a global look at, a restaurant was there, a restaurant is coming in, the smoke shop has taken over space. I didn't know the prior building, but it doesn't look like the footprint has changed much, and it obviously is a permitted use, both of those in the zone. So as David said, it's a like-for-like, and I know that we meet every 2 weeks, which is good, but we also know the pressure on the property owner, and also, I'm sure they'd like to open the restaurant sooner than later. One option may be to give a prelim, if you're so inclined, to give a preliminary site plan approval so the restaurant can move forward in their tasks, and then reserve on the final approval until you get the revised plan. Again, the preliminary approval is saying, as David said, a like-to-like, a restaurant is okay. A new restaurant can come in. The smoke shop, again, is permitted a preliminary site plan approval, but the final site plan approval would not be granted until you get the revised site plan, as Ernie just said, showing where the parking spaces are and the like. That may, again, you're the planning board, one of the topics we were talking about is that an applicant is before you because it's a permitted use. So, working with the, the property owner, this, that may be a way of allowing them to continue their good-faith efforts, but recognizing the applicant that this board, that's an unusual relief that they would be doing for you if they do decide that.
How many parking spaces are we talking required? Joan, what'd you say around 50?
I calculated 50 based on the numbers from their site plan with the square footage. And I don't, I didn't know about these 3 outside, and that's a whole other question. Was it ever approved for outdoor dining? Because if not, then...
That may have been a carryover from COVID.
They have been, I'm not sure. But I do want to say, if you go up and down Route 15, between the bagel station, the sprinkle shack, everybody's got outdoor dining, and, you know, they've made patios, they've made all kinds of stuff.
Maybe, maybe they were approved. I can't speak to any of them. I'm just asking for this property.
I don't know the answer to that question, to be honest with you, so...
But I, I think if we're, if we're talking about a preliminary approval, you know, it really has to be that can you get the 50 spaces? You know, I mean, otherwise we're talking about a variance, right?
Exactly.
So, I mean, and again, like, I'm looking at Google, I, I'm, I'm somewhere between like 42 and 47, depending on the blobs that are on there, as to what they are, as to whether they're a dumpster or whether it's a marked spot. So, I mean, I think it's, you know, a matter of, you know, are you confident you can get to that 50?
And also to Ms. Knight's point regarding circulation for, for deliveries and for refuse pickup. I mean, I couldn't get a good look.
Yeah, I think the circulation is okay because they do share the parking lot with, or the property, the adjacent property on the one side of the restaurant shares, so they have parking, but it's a shared driveway, so it seems like there's pretty good circulation on that side. It's, the other side's a little tighter, but I don't think they're getting the same amount of deliveries over there where the, the transport is or the tobacco shop.
One of the reasons with the counting, I think, might be because you're counting back-to-back. You said you could double park.
Yeah, but we, I didn't count. I think there was 47 spots without the stacked parking. Again, I'd have to talk with Alan Campbell, but I believe there was 47 spots. And as far as the, the deliveries, there is, when the delivery truck pulls in, there is an area alongside the freezer, the freezer and refrigerator, the huge commercial freezer. There's an area that is away from, they can back right in where they can take the stuff right in the kitchen door.
That's marked off, it's hatched out.
Yeah, on the, sorry for interrupting you. The, on the site, the site plan from 2015, it says total spaces provided 45, and then it says variance for 8 spaces required. So it appears that in 2015, 53 spaces were required based on those uses, and 45 spaces were on the site. So I think just...
That may have been when the Realtor was in there also, the Realtor office?
I'm unsure, because it says office, warehouse, storage, so many of these uses are no longer what's on the site. So once again, by providing us with that, I think it would provide us with a clearer idea of what is happening, yeah.
So, 2 questions. Number 1, what's the timeline for your, your official site plan?
Oh, he's pretty much, he's, they've already measured, him and the architect have been there. They've measured their, it's, it's getting close to where I'd like to get it done and come in front of the board. But of course, these guys have been...
I mean, is it possible that it can be done before our next meeting?
I have no idea. I would have to talk to Alan Campbell, but I, I know Alan is a busy man, and I know he was working on it, so I'm not sure how far he's gotten.
Okay, so question number 2, then, would it be possible to provide us with something similar to what Lindsay was discussing in terms of just maybe an Excel sheet that kind of shows us what's where, even if it's not an official?
Yes, if we can get these guys up and running, I will work on that as, absolutely, as soon as possible, and talk with Alan, maybe see what he's got, how far along he is prepared.
Is the, the restaurant, are they, I drove by, but how long until they'd be able to open?
They are ready to open. They are ready to open. And, you know, I've, I've lost 9 months of rent with them and months of rent through the smoke shop. My taxes on that property are $34,000 a year, 1.75 acres. My insurance is $9,000 a year. That doesn't incl, that's just those. I'm trying to stay afloat to get them going. You know, I don't want to lose this property. When my husband passed away, we struggled to keep things going. He owned 2 other restaurants that I was thrown into overnight, and it had been a nightmare. But now we're in a good place, and we were in a good place, but again, I've just lost so much rent that if we can get them up and moving, I will promise you that we will get you that site plan. I will talk with Alan. I know he's already been there and measured with the architect. He's talked to my attorney, Megan Ward. It is not far away, but...
And Doctor, just so you realize though, this is very unusual. And in a lot of other municipalities, they would reject your application as a right. You wouldn't even be before the board.
I understand. I understand, and I, I know you guys are all volunteers, so I appreciate at least being here tonight. We have been waiting a very long time, and it's been a great expense.
My thoughts are, as Mr. Simmons said, that like-to-like, and as long as they're, can conform with the last variance and come into those same numbers, I'd be comfortable with that.
And if you look at the, that, the 2015 exhibit, it does, as was repeated, I think Lindsay just said, 45 provided, variance for 8 required, variance granted, March 25th, 2015. I know in the package there are some resolutions, but they reference prior. But as David and Ernie just said, the, if it's the like-for-like with a preliminary approval, I think that's something that I could protect you as the board attorney in your resolution.
And I do want to say, one of those spaces is empty. I am not renting it out to anybody at this point until we get the, the revised site plan with Alan so that it doesn't take up any more parking spots.
And that's a good point. Now, describe the space that's empty.
The, the, the space that is known as 1A. 1A has 2 little offices with a large room in the back area that was rented to the photographer. The one, the small office is rented to above-the-rest transport. It's a, it's a very small office. The rest of that is vacant. I will not rent it until I know that legally I can put something in that, so we stay within the guidelines of Sparta Township. The 1A is right next to the physical therapist, if you look at it.
Now, 1A says 1,000 square feet office that is vacant?
That, there, 1, there's 2 little offices as part of that.
Right, it says real estate.
It's probably, no, yeah, yeah, it's the above-the, above-the-rest transport. She's got a little office, maybe 300 square feet at the most, if that. She's the only one in there, the rest of that is vacant. When the photographer moved out in September, I did not rent that so that I could come in front of the board and do the right thing to make sure that we have the proper parking spaces. So that, those parking spaces for that office are not being used by that spot.
Now, how about in the 2015, again, it says 1A office, and then it says, excuse me, underneath that, warehouse slash storage. I'm looking at your 2015. 1A.
That used to be some storage for the restaurant. When my husband was alive, that was partly his office where they would store stuff for the restaurant.
Yeah, I, I'm just trying to make it easy on myself because if we say that no further use at 1A on your 2015, I don't believe that is... I'm not sure that, that is all vacant right now, or is it?
It says One A storage slash office for restaurant. If the new restaurant operation comes in, are they utilizing One A?
No, they are not.
Okay. Is anybody in One A right now?
Yes, above the rest transport. She has an office, maybe two to three hundred square feet, a small, there's two small offices as you walk in, and the larger area is in the back.
But if the board was to give you preliminary approval, you would agree that you would not rent out any further space in the complex until final site plan approval is granted?
Absolutely. What I would hope to do in the future, and Alan and I have talked about it, I am a chiropractor. I've been practicing over forty years, I'm sixty-eight years old. I'm retiring. I have three children in Florida. When I come back up to this area every couple of months, and we may try to get approval, I'd like to put one chiropractic table back there, or maybe I could see a few people every couple of months just to, you know, we'll see if we get to that point with, if Sparta would allow that, which not, would not require a lot of space.
Yeah.
Is there any room in the back at all where you could expand parking? Or somebody, like, lease a parking space from some land in the, somebody else in the back?
You know, I believe, I don't know the answer to that question, but I know Alan probably would, Alan Campbell probably would. And I would be absolutely willing to do that if I needed to, to get this property up and going and keep it proper.
And then, and then you'll also come back with a multi-tenant sign plan where they're all consistent? The same colors, same, okay.
I have a question. So, if I may, that, when was this application deemed complete? Or, or we're kind of saying it's quasi-complete at this point, Mr. Poro?
I think it's quasi.
Okay.
The, as a courtesy, I, I know that this has been around for a while, and, uh, so I'm, I'm satisfied that you have enough before you for preliminary approval. I have pause that if there was a problem on final approval. But the applicant has already agreed to the like for like as far as the restaurant and the Smoke Shop for a preliminary approval so they can get up and going. And then before they get a final approval, that they would provide a final plan and parking, and there would be no additional operation in One A. So, that's our discussion right now.
So, with that being said, I have a follow-up question. How does ordinance twenty-five oh six bear on the retail use on this? Because that, I think that went into effect in February. So, I don't know if the lawyer or planner could weigh in on. My understanding is PCED has a restriction on retail uses within PCED.
So, you're saying the Smoke Shop operation?
Yeah, I mean, specifically, it's, it's, you know, we want to take a look at twenty-five oh six.
Well, I, I would just say this. I mean, again, I drove by the site, and I've driven that, that roadway. We would be hard pressed to say that the Smoke Shop that's in operation there now is not in compliance. They may be grandfathered, they may, may be now a pre-existing non-conforming use. But as far as they are up and running, they obviously got some approvals from the town, so...
All right, so they got some approvals, but the application is quasi-complete, but prohibited uses in PCED include outdoor retail sales, retail display areas, and the only permitted uses are agricultural uses and outdoor recreational uses. So, presumed prohibited, right?
I would say that...
Just checking.
Right, it's my professional opinion, they're a pre-existing non-conforming use, if, under that statute.
So, pre-existing non-conforming because the Smoke Shop has been operating prior to receipt of a complete application or from the previous retail use bearing on this?
They, they obviously got some approval, either in the building department zoning, that they are up and running. They don't have a sign approval, they don't have other approvals. But the use, again, they're before the planning board. Now, if that new ordinance comes into, into place...
Well, it's in place.
What, do, do we have any idea at what point they got their certificate of occupancy?
On November of last year.
I'm sorry?
It was November.
November of last year.
The, the gentleman in the back who, with the Smoke Shop, can you stand, please? The Asomu swear to tell the truth, hold truth, and not but the truth, so help you God. What is your name, please?
Please give him a microphone. You can give him the other one.
Good evening.
Your name, sir?
Yuvraj Oberoi.
Tell that, please.
Y U V R A J.
And you're, that's...
Oberoi, O B E R O I.
And you're the owner of the Smoke Shop?
That's correct.
And when did you get the certificate of occupancy to open up?
Uh, November twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, that's good enough for me. I don't know if...
Can I have a question, please?
Go ahead.
Okay. Just because I'm kind of a beginner at this, I don't understand how this is like for like. We had a computer repair shop doing repairs, and now we are selling... Selling something. I, i- is repair and sales, that, those are the same thing?
I'm, I'm satisfied that the, in November of two thousand and twenty-four, the use that was proposed at this site was such that the building department found or zoning officer found was permitted. They have a certificate of occupancy for the property. So, I mean, we could historically go back and see how that happened, but they're in possession, and they've been there since November two thousand and twenty-four. So, again, I haven't done the research on why they are pre-existing, but they're absolutely there.
Okay. Thank you. Why does it say in Mr. Kelly's report that the Sparta Smoke Shop was advised it could open prior to appearing here before the, the board? Without the parking spaces straightened out, without, you know, the use discussed, without anything? How, how, how can that happen?
Well, as, as David, our engineer, had noted, you've got the four corners of the building. If the four corners of the building did not expand, and it, it's not uncommon that a use that is permitted can move into the space because there's an assumption. Now, the tenancy on parking, let's say that the tenant moves in, has a different parking requirement, but it looks here that the operation has one employee and limited customer base. So, there was a determination by someone that they were permitted to go into that zone.
Okay, great.
Change in use is supposed to come before the minor site plan subcommittee.
Oh, did the change in use come in front of the minor site plan committee?
No.
I don't know.
No?
No.
Oh. So, that's, that's not good.
That was at the end of last year, so, yeah, you haven't seen it at the end of last year.
I know, it did not come to the minor site plan subcommittee.
So, just, just to...
So, that's not good, right?
That's not good.
Okay.
Section two of what was provided by Kelly and Ward, page one, says zoning approval conditions for zoning. Retail use was approved November twentieth, twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, no interior exterior changes, sale or distribution of cannabis prohibited. And if a new sign is proposed, there's not a like-for-like replacement, a minor site plan application is needed. And previously in ED zone, where retail uses were not permitted, but subsequently, I believe, they were permitted, and now they're not as February twenty twenty-five. Okay, just want to get that on there.
All right, so it's, okay. So, next thing I, next thing I wanted to know is, is, are, are you a, is this, is the Sparta Smoke Shop LLC a licensed cannabis retailer?
I'm sorry, sir? No, it's not.
It's not, okay. Is it a class five retailer licensee?
I would not be able to answer that because...
You mean as in cannabis?
Okay. Have, has the Sparta Smoke Shop been through the full state licensing process to sell cannabis? And...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Please go, please go right ahead.
Right, so, just to let the whole board know, we are not a cannabis store. We sell hemp-derived products, which are under point three percent THC. And that's, that's not considered, from my knowledge, cannabis. It's all hemp-derived products.
Okay. See, because I didn't understand that today. I was in there, and you can look at me, I'm, I was on the tape at four o'clock. I was in there for about twenty minutes. Lovely girl, very helpful, very explanatory, told, taught me a lot about, lot, a lot about it. It was kind of bringing me back to my high school days. It was really kind of refreshing. And I was thinking of, it, they said that, you know, she said that I could buy, buy some flower, flower bud that would allow me to get, get really stoned, or I could just buy flower stuff that would just make me feel smooth all throughout. Now, is that, is that, is that product, is that, is that?
Did you buy it?
No, I didn't buy, I didn't buy anything, please. Just for the record, I did not purchase anything. I was just a shopper. Okay. Just shopping. So, I just wanted to know, is, what was she trying to sell me?
Hemp.
Hemp? And that's different, the THC is lower?
That is correct. That, according to the two thousand and eighteen Farm Bill, anything that contains less than point three percent THC is considered hemp products, and this is, it's hemp-derived.
Okay, so if I go in tomorrow, I would not see something that's point five or higher?
No, sir. Every product has barcodes on it, you can scan it, lab reports pop up. We do not sell anything that is out of packaging or does not have any significant labeling or any sort of nondescriptive. So, that is it.
Great. Okay, so, also along that line, now, would, would Sparta be receiving any tax revenue from this, your sales?
He may, he may not understand.
Can I invite my partner?
You can ask anybody.
Yeah.
The Asomu swear to tell the truth, hold truth, and not but the truth, so help you God. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello. Ravtar Chauhan, H A R A V T A R, last name Chauhan, C H A U H A N.
And your involvement to...
Uncle. But I have experience, I'm advisor, uncle. My wife is a partner in the business.
Can you answer the question of Councilman Scott?
So, all the products that we carry are Farm Bill compliant, and these are all hemp-derived, legal in the state of New Jersey. You know, and all the products that we have are compliant throughout the state, as well as federally. And this doesn't fall under the recreational marijuana, this is a hemp-derived product, legal in all fifty states.
And this isn't like where you would sell cannabis and give a percentage to the town?
Sales tax, just the New Jersey sales tax. It's not under any of those, you know, products.
So, the lea, the legalized THC concentration is below point three percent, so maybe the person helping you just thought you had a low tolerance.
Yeah, maybe that, maybe that, then, yeah, maybe, I, I could have been delusional that I saw higher, higher levels than that. But maybe, you know, I, I've made mistakes before. So, you know, on, on, in the corners, you know, there was a vast array of glass pipes there.
Yes.
All right. And those glass pipes could be used for, for many things, right? They could be used for crystal meth, they could be used for crack cocaine. In fact, there were special stems that were, that looked just like crack cocaine stems, all right? With little, with little screens in them already put in. Now, that's, that's convenience, right? So, I was just looking at that, and then I was looking, and I turned, and I looked up at the, at the torches, right? Because instead of just using a lighter, like I used to do in high school, right? Now, you can, you could put this torch, like they do when they smoke crystal meth or crack cocaine, and, and you have a whole display of those. And that is, that's, that's illegal in the state of New Jersey under, you know, NJSA two C dash thirty-six dash two. And I just don't, I, I don't understand why that's allowed in, 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 in our town. I mean, I, I go to the lovely restaurant that it sounds like it's going to be, and I come out with my child, and we go by the store, and I have to explain what these things are. And I, I didn't move here for that. And I don't believe that this is a legal operation. That's just my humble opinion.
Councilman Scott, unfortunately, we're, we're not here to, to disparage any, any...
I'm not, I'm not disparaging anybody. I'm just saying, it doesn't appear to me to be...
It sounds like when you were there, you, if, if you truly felt that way, you should have called the police. That, that's what it sounds like.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you.
But the unfortunate circumstances, that's, that's beyond the purview of, of the board and, and what we're doing right now. So, I, I think we should probably bring it back to the, the application and seeing as though we haven't yet opened it to the public after Birgit's question.
Okay. So, Mr. Simmons, in his report, under septic system, said the existing buildings are served by existing septic systems. Confirmation on the adequacy of the existing septic systems to be obtained from Sussex County Health Department. In an email today, received by the Sparta Planning Department, it said that the health officer or, or such took a quick look at the septic records and found that the metal septic tank was replaced with a concrete fifteen-hundred-two compartment tank in two thousand and three. The tank and any components should be load-bearing if it is in the parking lot. The septic disposal field appears to be the original and was designed for five thousand nine hundred and forty square feet retail use, as well as two apartments. Total volume designed for one thousand four hundred and sixty-four, I'm assuming gallons, gallons. If this system has not been inspected to ensure it is operating property, properly, this should be considered. There is a change to one two-bedroom apartment as well as taekwondo classes in the retail space. The septic size volume may need to be reviewed to ensure it is still sized properly. Can you speak to the septic? Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not...
That deals with your prior application.
This was, this was under the Sparta Smoke Shop and Mediterranean Cuisine email. So, I think perhaps she...
That was just forwarded to me this evening from his ward.
That may have been a typo about the taekwondo, but specifically it's...
This is very specific to a different property.
To twenty-five, seven thirty-six, it says, Sparta Smoke Shop and Mediterranean Cuisine.
I think it was mislabeled because it's not our property. They probably mistakenly put our label on the application that was before you earlier tonight.
Well, it's from Dave.
David, you're right.
That's what it said.
I, I did not see that email.
Tin, metal.
Does it have a block in law on it?
This just came into...
I mean, there are three, there are three septic areas marked on the two thousand and fifteen site plan. One is, uh, in front of what is still labeled as building number two or space number two, the computer urgent care. It has two septic things. And then towards the back of the building, there is a reserved septic disposal area and a septic air.
Yes, just for the board, there, there is nothing wrong we've done in the past, put as a condition of any approval, that they're, prior to opening, that they have compliance with all those public health safety issues and the septic. So, that, that, uh, that is not a problem with putting that as a condition before they open. so that, that, uh, uh, that is not a problem with putting that as a condition before they open.
I mean, when, yeah, when was, I mean, we need to know at least that the septic would be able to accommodate?
I, I agree with what you're saying, and as a matter of fact, just for the board and for the record, on page five of my report, item number thirteen A, Sussex County Health Department, septic system slash confirmation. So, I, I agree with what you're saying, and Mr. McGovern and Dr. Negri can confirm, uh, as a condition of approval, they'd be willing to do that.
Yeah, the only, of course, my only concern, of course, is we'd love to get this place operating.
Right, but it, you know?
I understand.
Oh, right.
Believe me, I understand.
That's why it's very clear.
I understand.
They, if the toilets don't, uh, don't operate, nobody's opening.
We got it.
So, for the applicant council, they agree that, that would be a condition prior to opening.
I think we're at the point where we should open to, uh, to the public, anything here, for any questions?
Just one minor point. My first point, I won't, won't make any friends, but I've been saying this since I was on a planning, Mike Devine, oh, Sparta. I've been saying this since I was on a planning board a thousand years ago. We spent so much time on signs and parking and other things that it would seem to me they could almost be solved by a robot before it becomes in front of you people, and you might focus on bigger picture things. I sat here thinking, what about cannabis? It's such a hot topic. Are they gonna sell cannabis? I thought Councilman Scott's point about the pipes is something worth discussing. It seems to me it's relevant. I know where I use the, uh, therapy place, which is right adjacent to them, to turn left if I'm going north on fifteen, I gotta go in across that yellow area and make a left-hand turn. I'm sitting in the middle aisleway for five minutes trying to turn. If I come out and I wanna turn left, that's another big problem. I haven't heard any discussion of things like that. Aren't they maybe more relevant than if we have five or six parking spaces? I, I think it's a safety hazard, the way they turn in. I don't know how they've been screwing around for six months, not you. I really think we should be leaning towards getting businesses, desirable businesses underway. It, it concerns me as a resident that they've had to go through whatever six months is. I don't still understand exactly what the smoke shop is. I know the cigar shop has like lounges where you sit there and smoke. Apparently, they're not gonna do anything like that, I guess. That would affect the residence time of people in the parking. So, I, I don't know that we've really probed into some fairly important things, but I hesitate to bring it up, cause I'd like, I'd like you to say tonight, given these circumstances, these conditions, et cetera, these agreements, let them start. So, that, that's my point of view.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Not made for short people. Um, Beth Broderick, North Shore. I have a question, kinda like what Mike was saying.
A little louder.
How is the, was a traffic study done to handle the volume of people in and out? I know you said at one point, I think you said thirty people for the smoke shop, is that, I thought I heard thirty people at one point?
That was an error in the beginning when they, uh?
Okay. And then, there was, how is the volume in and out gonna go? Like Mike said, what about safety going in and out? That is, I think, according to McCarrick's report, the worst spot for cars and driver safety in all of Sparta. How is that being addressed to make sure that when people are going to support these businesses, that they're not gonna get clocked by a truck or something, or whatever goes on there? My other question is, with the delivery trucks, what time would the deliveries be coming? Because if you have people in and out from nine AM to eleven PM based on the outlying hours, how is that gonna work with people in and out? And can the trucks get in and out safely without causing a problem for everybody that's gonna be in and out of there? Because, again, you've got a big truck, I don't know what size truck is gonna be coming in, but are they gonna be backing in? Is that gonna be a problem with Route fifteen and customers going in and out, supporting these businesses?
My husband never allowed delivery trucks to come during lunch or dinner. It was always prior to opening or in the afternoon between lunch and dinner. And no, if they have to go out, they can go right, take a left at Shop Right if they had to and go around. It's really?
The truck, you mean?
Anybody, sure, or you could go down to, um, Limecrest and even come around to Wilson Drive if you had to get back onto fifteen.
Okay, I'm gonna be a smartass. Um, that's an awful lot to ask for a customer to do, to be safe, but also two thousand ten, two thou- nineteen ninety, whatever, Route fifteen is very different than two thousand twenty-five Route fifteen with the housing development and all of the businesses across the street in the Shop Light, Shop Right Shopping Center. Traffic is very different now than it was ten years ago, or even five years ago before COVID. So, that's gonna, that's something that's of concern. And I think it's also a lot to say, okay, well, gee, we wanna open, we want people to come in, we wanna support the local businesses, and I'm a big supporter of local businesses, but I think it's a lot to say, okay, guys, we're in a rush to get this open, but it may or may not be a good idea for you to pull in and out of the parking lot. If you wanna go left to go up to White Lake Road, or go up to Dunkin' Donuts, you have to make a right, go down to the jug handle on Route fifteen, over the railroad tracks and everything, to come back up to go to Dunkin' Donuts. If I were gonna go to the restaurant, and it was a pain in the ass, sorry, the pain in the butt for me to get in, um, sorry, I've been up since five fifteen this morning, um, for me to turn in there, and then say, okay, well, you wanna go, you need to make a left to go onto your next thing. I'm not coming.
If the food was good enough, you'd go.
Sorry. But I'm also a traffic nerd, so I ask these guys, I ask this of everybody, so?
Well, wasn't a Chipotle just recently approved too, right on the corner there?
And then they returned out, and then they turned around and sued. But, and now, but I'm, I'm not here to talk about Chipotle. I was a big?
It's the same area.
Right, and I asked the same questions. I, I think, and I, I'm all for getting you up and running with the thirty-four thousand dollars in taxes and everything else, I understand, but I think that the board needs to focus on the residents of Sparta and making sure that whatever comes in, regardless of what was there before, that resident safety has to come first. Nobody's gonna go into a restaurant or to your shop if it's not safe to get in and out. Uh, you know, that's just gonna be another challenge for you down the road. The other thing, again, too, is with the trucks, how does that work? How big are the trucks? I know it's not gonna be, or I'm assuming it's not gonna be like a, an eighteen-wheeler trying to pull in there? Okay, and there's enough room with the fifty parking spots that?
There always has been since nineteen ninety-two.
Okay.
And the master plan was to always put development out there, not to protect the, the Sparta residents and not put it into the main street.
But the master plan is also forty years old.
No, it's actually not forty years. I think, wasn't there a new updated one, like twenty years ago? To move it out onto Route fifteen, onto a major highway, then onto a?
But either way, it's still very different. Again, I'm not, I gotta, I'm not, I'm just asking the questions. There's, I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just asking. I've been here since nineteen seventy-nine, so I understand.
Been here since nineteen eighty-two.
So, you get it, so you understand the cornfields and everything. I'm just asking to make sure that this is addressed, not to be difficult, because, again, these guys need to look at the safety of the people that would be going in and out, as well as your tenants and the people that work for your tenants. So, I just wanna make sure. Um, do you know, did Kurt Morris do a traffic study?
I have, uh, here was by Sergeant Smith. Um, he was more concerned about the parking capacity and the shortfall and the discrepancy that's gonna result in those shortages and future complaints to the police department.
So, it ties into kinda, not necessarily the volume or anything, but also the safety. Okay, thanks.
Hi, Dean Reinauer, fifteen Birch Parkway, been here for over forty-two years. I tend to be very pro-business, and the questions that I expect to see, um, asked of the people sitting on the planning board have somewhat been addressed, but I think it, you're getting into some minutia. As somebody in the transportation industry, I look at it as if you're not gonna have a fifty-three-foot truck pull into your facility, the dispatching of, uh, the company of the products for food or whatever goes in there, just like in the past, they're going to know the roads, they're going to send maybe a twenty-eight or a thirty-six-foot truck. They're not gonna put a fifty-two-foot truck in. They have that ability, we have that, with, it's called logistics, okay, and I think that can be handled. I have seen that sign, Mediterranean Cuisine and Pizza coming soon. Man, I'd like it to open already. I mean, we've got thirty-some-odd empty buildings. I understand getting into the weeds, but it's like enough already. I mean, we're talking a frickin' sign when it comes down to it. I mean, I, I think you, you, you gotta go and you can tweak along, tweak along the way. Let them, let them open and, and then tweak along the way. It apparently isn't gonna be cannabis, it's gonna be hemp. I know that's less of an issue than, um, um, cannabis, and, um, I've used hemp, so, you know, um, I'd, I'd really like to see an opportunity for these businesses to open. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other members of public?
No, closed to the public. We're closed to the public now. Go ahead.
Okay, closing to the public.
Mr. Poro?
Yes.
Um, you know, um, it appears to me that, that, that proper approval was never really received here. And, you know, I, 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 I think to what people are saying, we wanna get the restaurant open, why can't we just approve the restaurant and, you know, claw back the smoke shop at this point in time until we get some clarity as to what's going on there, what's being sold, what's being, uh, what products are being sold, and get these, and get this group in front of the minor site plan committee so it's done the right way. And, uh, I think we still need the septic conversation. Isn't that correct, Dave? Mr. Simmons?
Uh, the condition was that the, uh, Health Department review the septic system and make sure it's adequate.
Okay, so we're not there yet, is what you're saying?
That, that would be a condition of approval if the board was willing to grant it.
But what if it came back afterwards and the approval was already granted?
No, it's a condition. It would never be able to open without the septic approval. My advice to you is, you have two operations that, uh, again, if you walk to the site, the, uh, Smoke Shop building, uh, was in the footprint that didn't ex- expand. Uh, they do have a C of O, uh, to the property. If I would ask that they, um, provide a copy, Dory confirms that, but let's assume that testimony under oath is correct. The restaurant is pretty clear. Historically, the restaurant was there. So, I would recommend to the board, if you're inclined to give preliminary approval, so they can move forward. However, uh, again, the two thousand and fifteen, uh, site plan is on its face deficient, and, um, I would say that before they get final site plan approval, that they would provide an updated, uh, final site plan that addresses those concerns that were discussed. By giving them preliminary site plan approval, they can move forward with their renovations, with their efforts. But, so it's clear to the applicant, they, the restaurant could not open until they get final site plan approval. As the, uh, public was saying, they, they need to know, the, uh, Police Department and the like, how are trucks coming in? Where is the dumpster? What are the hours of operation? How are you restricting, uh, access, if any, to the, the streets? And that is where it would be addressed in final site plan approval. But by giving preliminary, you're allowing the applicant to move forward with their efforts in good faith. That's all I have.
So, are we ready for a motion?
So, is this just for the restaurant?
No, I thought that it's the Smoke Shop shop sign and the restaurant renovations?
Well, the, what I'm suggesting is the, the, the Smoke Shop has a C of O. They don't have a sign. So, the preliminary approval is just allowing the restaurant to, uh, move forward. They can't open until they address the issues that were discussed. And when we get the signage, that would have now the proposal of Smoke Shop and the restaurant. So, before you give final approval, and hopefully it could be in two weeks at your next meeting, uh, that, uh, you would have these revised plans, we'd have a final site plan approval and a final signage, um, depiction, and then they could be on their way.
Could I just add something to think about? I know time is tight, but, uh, it's come up before Ernie brought it up. Uh, we heard from Mark, um, regarding the question of, I guess, products or paraphernalia possibly? Um, is, is there any way we could condition so that the Smoke Shop is just selling, uh, hemp and not, uh, paraphernalia? Or how do people feel about that, or just?
Well, they think, the requirement is, they have to comply with the law. So, and Ernie is here, if there's a violation of a statute, um, they can't do it. It's, it's really that, so, from a zoning perspective, they have a C of O, but that does not permit them in any way, shape, or form to sell anything that is not, uh, proper by the state of New Jersey. Ernie, anything to add?
I just wanted to, but I just wanted to call that out, because it says that zoning approval conditions included no sale or distribution of cannabis, but it doesn't mention, it's silent on anything regarding paraphernalia. So, I would feel more comfortable including?
Go to Rockaway Mall and go in Spencer's Gift Shop. I mean, they, they've been selling that stuff for?
Okay, alright.
Years. I mean, it's, it's legal to be sold in New Jersey. I mean, whether we agree with it or not, it's not, it's not a legal product.
Okay.
I think this sets a bad precedent. I'm for the restaurant opening. I'd love to see it open, but I think we are setting a bad precedent here. Um, and it's two weeks away. What is two weeks? Why are we rushing this? Let's get the information. Let's find out about the square footage. Let's find out how many parking spaces there are. Let's find out a little bit more about the traffic circulation, and let's do this the right way. That's my opinion.
If they wanna sell paraphernalia, they can sell it in Rockaway.
I'm gonna make a suggestion to the applicant, and you don't have to take it, because, I mean, we, we will eventually go, come to a motion if you don't take it. Um, if you can get us either that site plan or a lot of the information that we're looking for within the confines of the next two weeks, and we can get you back on our, our schedule, um, that, that would be, I think, preferable to, to the majority of the board, um, just for various people's comfort levels and, and for the vote's sake. Um, if, if you're not amiable to that, I, I understand, you know, you, if you wanna try to push forward and see where the vote lies, um, the unfortunate circumstances that you may have to come back regardless. Um, but I am gonna throw that out there to you as, as an option, um, and, and I'll leave it to you to answer before we, we make a motion.
One sec.
Don't they have to come back anyway?
They will have to come back for the final site plan and the final signage. Um, yes.
The only thing a preliminary would do would allow them to start to?
Yeah, start.
Get the restaurant ready.
Right.
That's it. They, they wouldn't be able to open. They'd be able to do any renovations, move things around.
You could, if they get preliminary, that you would not be able to stop them from being a restaurant going forward, in my professional opinion. But I don't think that's a problem with anyone, anyway. Your concerns are traffic flow, final site plan layout. Uh, so, as the chairperson, uh, raised, if you can get that to us in two weeks, you can take care of everything.
Well, actually, that begs the question, Dory, do, would we be capable of putting them on the, on the calendar? Okay, so you, we would be able to get you on the calendar in two weeks?
I have a question.
Sure.
If Alan is not able to finish the site plan, and I get, um, a letter from the Health Department stating that the septic is adequate, can we get them open if he's not able to get the site plan prepared in two weeks?
If Alan is able to come here and testify, that we, we shouldn't have any?
Testify?
As many spaces there are.
Right, correct, to be able to come and answer the question. Part of the problem is that he's not here to answer those questions. So, you know, we're, we're missing too much information and to, for, for everybody to have a, 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 a good idea and a good assessment of, of how this is supposed to play out.
Yeah, but Doc, Doc?
It's not, it's not just parking spots.
The traffic flow is a problem, because the lot is not laid out with arrows and space. It's, it's, as the public had mentioned, public health, safety, and welfare is, is our, and God forbid there is a car accident. So, a final site plan normally shows the lanes, dumpster location, traffic flow curbing, restriction of turns, all those public health, safety issues that we just don't know.
And we're not trying to delay you months. We're just, we're, we're saying, I can, I, we, we've confirmed that we can get you on the calendar in two weeks. If we can either get Alan here to testify, or have those, that final, you know, site plan complete, then we can, we can really get the ball rolling. then we can, we can really get the ball rolling. But again, like I said, the, the decision at this point is yours. I can put it to a motion. You let me know what you're willing to do.
So it sounds like what you're really suggesting is really a continuance, right?
Carry.
Correct.
Let's get it in two weeks and all. Allen, like I said, they've already been there measured. He's met with the architect, so hopefully he's got a lot of it done and going.
And if he's not ready, we would notify you so you can...
We'd carry two more weeks if...
Right. We can carry two more weeks. Or again, if he's, if he's willing to come and testify, that's, again, a totally different animal.
It's, the, there's a, septic has certifications, has a whole, David, has a whole world of its own, and that's way above my pay grade. So any thoughts on the septic, David?
I think one of the things that Mr. Campbell can do is evaluate the septic, write a letter to the County Health Department, and get a concurrence letter from them.
So Allen?
I'll talk to you about it.
Okay.
Yes. I'd have Allen call the County Health Department.
So if we're amiable to continue to our next meeting, which is the...
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
September seventeenth?
We, we request that and consent to that.
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay.
And so Board, if we get a vote on carrying this application to September seventeenth, there will be no additional notice. So the public can know we're just carrying it without new notice. If someone moved that?
I'll move that according to stipulations as I put it together.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, who is that second?
Me, Birgit.
Birgit, thank you, Birgit. Birgit Bogler?
Yes.
Jeanette Burke? Yes. Joan Furman?
Yes.
Ernie Ragsden?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mark Scott?
This is to carry it?
Carry it.
Yes.
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Christine Dunbar?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Robert Otto?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Selah Sosina.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. I know, under normal circumstances, we wouldn't be doing any new business, but I think we should probably jump to...
I'm satisfied, the Board, the Board member role and powers, we've talked about that the last meeting. And at the beginning, we talked about that a little more. So I have nothing further to add on Board member role and powers. I would say you can go, Lady Chair, to updates.
Yeah, that's, that was my assessment. So let's jump to updates, and if we can keep them brief, that would be great. So we'll start with Town Council?
Sure. The last Town Council meeting we had, we passed a lot of, lot of, a lot of bills, a lot of...
Nineteen.
Laws. We passed a lot of, we made a lot, we made a lot of action. And then we were trying to fill the zoning and plan, zoning board, and, and we lost our quorum. So that's all I have to report.
Okay, so we will jump to Environmental?
Yeah, the Environmental Commission. I'll just make it short and say that we've achieved our Sustainable New Jersey Bronze Certificate level once again.
Congratulations.
That's great.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's hit Minor Site Plan Subcommittee?
Do you want to do Master? You want to go this way and just do?
Just go ahead.
Well, I was going to bear on that, but I don't really want to get too specific, but just in general, we had our professional today. And that reminds me, we glossed over the other board business, but last time I had brought up the billing question. I don't know if you guys wanted to address it when we talked about fiscal responsibility and...
About under expenditures, when we get to that.
Okay. So yeah, otherwise, just the Minor Site Plan Subcommittee is just still wrestling with tricky ordinances. And hopefully, we can improve the design standards.
Okay, so Master Plan Subcommittee?
All right, well, I have some unfortunate news. Ron Day has decided to resign from the Master Plan Subcommittee. He was a very valuable member, served last year as Chair. And we're going to definitely miss him. And in, with him leaving, as Chair, I'd like to appoint Rob Otto. Rob has expressed a lot of interest since, I don't know, months ago, kept asking and asking if there's ever an opening. So I'd like to put him in that spot as the Planning Board member. And also, you know, we were talking a lot too about the Master Plan and the design standards and everything, and thought it might be, after last time's conversation, thought it might be a better place to do the design standards because we could, we could have more people than just the Planning Board. We can have, hopefully, the zoning board. They've expressed a lot of interest at the last zoning board meeting. They were bringing up the need to have a Subcommittee, and they want a voice in it. And they had a lot of issues with some of the applications. So my suggestion is that we move it there.
So, and I appreciate that. And, and it is said that, that Ron will be, he will be missed. So just to address, I'm now Chair of the Master Plan Subcommittee.
Ken, does that have to be?
And I absolutely agree that...
Ken?
That Rob should join us. I, I 100% agree on that. Because I think that, Rob, you bring a lot of valuable knowledge. I really, I really do appreciate the, the conversations that we have. And you're indispensable right now when it comes to, to design standards. You're pushing in your dedication. I truly appreciate that. So yes, if, if you are willing to join us, we are willing to have you. That having been said, unfortunately, I will be canceling tomorrow night's meeting until I have an opportunity to sit with Lindsay and kind of get up to speed on where we are.
You're at every single meeting.
I'm sorry?
You're at every single meeting. You should be up to speed.
Well, the unfortunate circumstance, I have a bunch of questions that I wasn't allowed to talk to professionals prior to now. So now that I have the opportunity to, to sit down and discuss certain things with Lindsay and, and kind of get up to speed, that would be, that would be ideal. But yes, I will be rescheduling as soon as Lindsay and I have that conversation. It will likely maybe be a week or so, but I will let everybody know when that gets rescheduled. And on that note, unless there's anything else for updates, which I don't think there are, and in the interest of time, Rob, as much as I would love to have this conversation about expenditures, that I think is going to end up being a lengthy conversation. What are your thoughts?
I don't, I don't know that it has to be. I mean, we did the CBD decision quite quickly last time, even when we were kind of...
Okay, so...
I'm just curious if people wanted to weigh in.
If we can do this in 10 minutes?
Two minutes? I don't know.
Then, you know...
Question first, are you also Chair of the Minor Site Plan Subcommittee now? Since you want to be Chair of everything?
Well, I, I don't need to be, but seeing as though Rob is the Chair of the Minor Site Plan Subcommittee...
And I was the Chair of the Master Plan Subcommittee.
You were the Chair of the Master Plan Subcommittee because you were the Chair of the Board.
Says you.
Is that how it works?
That is. Because the Chair of the Board...
That's the exact same thing with the Subcommittee.
So, so just, just to expand...
The egos are too much, I'm sorry.
Oh, my goodness, Joan, if you'd let me explain.
I, I don't care to hear it.
Okay, well, you as Chair had the discretion over Subcommittee's. Just like when Rob was Chair, he had discretion over trying to put together a design standards Subcommittee. Now I'm sitting in the seat, and I have discretion...
Yes, that's your daggas, we know. Don't cut me off at the knees. Ow.
Joan?
I'm done.
You're, the, the assertion of self-serving that was put out there for you, and, and I fought for you, and I tried to defend you. Ask Mark, Mark, I talked to you, and I said, can we fix this? And the fact that you're going to sit there and blame me...
Let's be nice now.
All right, can we move on to expenditures?
That's unfortunate.
All right, the Board on the expenditures you have, the only expenditures are Neglia's. And I think they're self-explanatory in your package. They're in legal form and look proper to me. Thank you.
And, well, with that too, was just the question, if you guys wanted to discuss it, if you thought it was a good idea or not. What had come up was just, you know, our professionals, we talked about it last time, that Ms. Knight, I believe, charges when she is reviewing an applicant, a developer, like Developer A, B, C, she charges accordingly. Mr. Simmons does not do it that way for us, but he has done it in the past for other townships. So my personal feeling is that we're, we're giving our time. The staff are here. If, if we were, if taxpayers are paying for the professionals, my preference would be that we, we would tackle design standards with them in an open forum, and we just get through that hard work, and that would benefit every business going forward. But we don't do it that way. So I just, I just think that the, the time Lindsay is getting paid to represent the applicants, and my feeling is that Mr. Simmons should also be getting paid to represent the applicants, who if they weren't here trying to convince us of the worthiness of their application, we would be doing other stuff. So, you know, if, if they had a conforming application, we wouldn't need our professionals to review them. It's kind of where I'm coming from it. And if we're trying to be fiscally responsible, and we're hearing that, you know, ratables, we need ratables, and we, you know, need money, I kind of would lean towards, put the onus on the business owner to pay their fair share. And I understand that some might say, well, that's not business friendly. But we are here, we're giving our time. Our professionals are here reviewing it. And again, I think that if we can update all this other stuff, we can be very business friendly. Unfortunately, right now, again, we haven't updated the Master Plan quite some time. The design standards are all over the place. So, I don't know.
I think what you're saying is, you know, time is money too, so...
Yeah.
If we can, if we can streamline the process by bringing the professionals in, that may be worth that money to those businesses to get things done quick.
Well, yeah, and that's, that's, sorry. And, and that's exactly what we heard, I think, was even on Minor Site Plan, we have a very hard time making a determination within the confines of the, the published code. So Mr. Simmons was good enough to come today to help us with kind of, you know, some questions that we had for an ongoing application with Minor Site Plan.
I think the issue we discussed the other meeting was that having to...
Contracts?
The, the fee that we, the escrow fee that's charged would need to be increased. So we need some help from, you know, with the ordinance, with council, and, you know...
Yeah, I think this...
It's going to take a little bit of time.
Well, this, we can't decide this. This is just, you guys agree that this is a memo to the governing body to revisit this?
I think that the conversation needs to be a little bit broader because I'm not exactly sure we have all of the information. So from one standpoint, I mean, yes, I get your, 100% get your point, right? Like the, let, let the applicant kind of, kind of weigh in on, on what's going on. From the other side of the coin, there is also, well, the professionals are here anyway. They're going to be here, they're here for our benefit.
Well, we should use them then.
No, what I'm saying is they're, they're here for our benefit. They're not here, like, the, the applicant has brought their own professionals to represent them. Our professionals are not representing them. They're here to assert the documentation that they've already written and have already billed them for. So that's kind of, in a sense, double dipping. I've heard that word before. So I'm not exactly sure we have all of the information, and I don't know if this is...
Talking about just a minor sub?
No, no, no. I'm talking about, I'm talking about billing a, as it, as it pertains here. Because, so what they were saying, so what, what was originally said was that Lindsay bills the applicant for her time when she's here. But in essence, Lindsay is here for our benefit to expand on the document that she wrote, which she already charged the applicant for. So is her billing her time to the applicant an actual valid use since she's here to represent us? Or is that, you see what I'm saying? There's, there's, there's a gray line there.
The time here in this meeting should be us paying for it. The time, but what I...
Right, and I think that's the gray area.
We don't usually have the benefit of the professionals and to be able to have them...
Opine.
You know, basically have them pay to have them there.
Minor Site Plan Subcommittee, total, totally different, different animal because that has no budget. And the fact that, that, you know, we haven't done that yet.
Let me ask, if we didn't have applications here, would the professionals be here to help walk us through the application?
No.
Uh, yeah, well, not walk us through specifically...
The developer should be paying. That's why the customer here should be paying.
All right, so we're not going to make a decision.
Yeah, if I could.
So I just wanted to...
Like I said, this wasn't going to get done in.
Let me use a, a very, tonight is an example. It's 10:30. We spent about an hour and a half on each application. So we would bill each app, the professionals, 1.5 on each application and a half an hour to the Board on our additional discussion. That is, that is one mechanism. The other mechanism, my retainer is I'm paid per meeting a set fee. If I'm here from 7:00 to 8:00, I get the same number as I'm here 7:00 to 1:00 a.m. So that is the other mechanism.
So are you available until 1:00 a.m.? Is that what you're telling me?
I, I have a practical question. What difference would it have made to you, Mr. Simmons, and you, Ms. Knight, with the questions that I asked about the septic system or the sport with the taekwondo? What difference would it have made to the way that you answered me? Would I have gotten an answer, or would I have, like...
I think she's saying, are you prejudiced to the Board or one way or the other?
No, 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 that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking is what difference would it have made if you bill the way that Rob is suggesting versus the way that you are billing now currently, which is that you are here to answer questions? That us, the, the non-professionals, I'm, I'm, I'm not an engineer, and I'm not a planner. What difference would it have made?
Actually, I think Mr. Poro explained it the best from the standpoint that most Boards that we, that I go to, in his example, we're assuming each applicant tonight used about an hour and a half worth of time. We would put their project number down, hour and a half meeting. The next application, an hour and a half meeting. Half hour, an hour, whenever we get completed here tonight, Sparta Planning Board, general board business. That's how we would divvy it up. When I started coming here many, many decades ago, I was advised, charge the meetings to the Sparta Planning Board. And that's what we've done ever since. My answer to you on those questions would have been the same no matter what. The answer is not going to change. And depending on how you folks would like it billed, divvied up or, or not, we can do either way. It's a matter of one entry on the computer tomorrow morning or X entries, depending on how many applications. It's not a problem for us. The only thing, I, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, you may want to, and I know it's a separate Board, but you may want to talk to the Township Manager and, and the zoning board and make sure you're consistent between the two Boards. Because there may be some applicants who have applications before both Boards. And some applicant who's in that situation may say, well, how come at the Planning Board, I pay the Planning Board, but at the zoning board, I pay myself, or vice versa?
And we had also brought up the potential of reviewing the contracts to make sure that there was nothing prohibitive.
Exactly.
And there wasn't. So I, while I was briefly chair, I reviewed them. I did, I didn't see anything untoward. So I, I think we could have moved forward on it, but I respect that it's early in the game, and my hopes to kind of quickly get through some stuff can't happen. But I would just put it again another way, which is if tonight's meeting were approaching, you know, a couple days ago, and we had no applications, my feeling is the meeting would have been canceled, and we would not have used our professionals. Alternatively, you know, if, if we're billing for Mr. Simmons' time, no matter whether there's an application or not, again, I think it would be, you know, long-term, short-term, it would be actually in the overall business community's best interest to say, okay, guys, don't show up until 8:00 o'clock from 7:00 to 8:00. We're already, we're paying, the taxpayers are footing the... We're already, we're paying, the taxpayers are footing the bill. Then we should all just like have a discussion about design standards and updating things that we have seen with past applications, minor site plan applications, and say, how do we make this work going forward, and same with planners, so.
And, and I just would like to say, there's been a couple meetings in this past year, and I believe I called the, the board chair lady, and I said, you know, based on there not being applications and it's mainly planning work and what have you, I really didn't think you needed me at that meeting, so I didn't come.
Yep.
And I was trying to save the townships some money.
Right.
Yep, I appreciate that.
So while you were, while you were Chair.
Well, I was.
Rob, I went and spoke to Mr. Zep, and he indicated that the reason that we, that we seem to, that Sparta seems to eat all the professional time for the, for the developers, is because he wants to be business friendly. And he had never heard of any other towns that allocated the time to the, to the, to the deposit or to the escrow. Now, I would, did a little research on, on just three, uh, using just three different uh AI functions, and over 75% of the towns in New Jersey do bill specifically the developer for their time. And I, I, I ran out of the house today, so I don't have that complete list of all the entities for Mr. Zep. But, you know, some, some 400 towns in this, in this, you know, they, instead of, instead of them paying the bill for, for your services, the developer does, because the developer is getting the entire benefit of it.
So I'm just, last thing that I'll say, is I'm not trying to be business unfriendly. I think that uh if it's properly communicated, that the businesses would appreciate this as, you know, a good way to save them time and increase efficiency. Um, and so, you know, it's a negligible amount of money, Mr. Simmons, I mean, you know, an hour or two review of your time for something, it's, you know, not, not, I'm not diminishing your, your hard-won PE license, um, but, and probably all your myriad other licenses, but it's not a significant burden, I don't think, to an applicant, and, you know, they come here, they come here with lawyers that they pay, they come here with architects, plans, all this, what we're talking about is not a huge amount of money.
We're trying to save the voters money. And, and that's what we should be doing, protecting their money.
The only other thing I, I think you have to be careful of is, and I've seen this in the past in other towns, uh, if you were gonna switch it so that it charged the applicant's escrow, you may have to bump up the escrow deposits.
Sure, that's what, that's what Eric was saying.
One thing I've heard, not necessarily if someone comes in with a big, major subdivision or a major site plan, but a, a smaller business, if they think it's like refinancing a mortgage, if you think it's gonna cost you $2,000, okay, I'll do it, and by the time you pay points and closing costs and everything else, it costs you $5,000, well, they might have said, well, if we didn't own that, we wouldn't have done it. Well, it's better to know upfront so that they don't get that sticker shock later on. Not that it's gonna be a monumental amount of money, but just so they know.
Or if they get denied, sometimes they won't pay.
Yeah.
Um, on that note, again, I don't think we're making a, a decision on this tonight, and we're gonna open it up to the public.
Thank you. Um, Jenny Derrick, I, I would just ask that you reconsider canceling tomorrow's meeting. I know it's less than 24 hours since then, and I know me personally, I have had to reorganize my schedule to accommodate the meeting. We didn't have one last month because there were other issues involved. And so I would just ask that maybe you reconsider that, because everybody has planned to have this, to be at this meeting tomorrow, and it's less than 24 hours, and, you know, schedules have been accommodated, people are donating their time, and uh.
I, I do, and I appreciate all of that, and I will endeavor to do my best, I, I have to, just, let me see what I can, I can get done. I appreciate it, and I apologize.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Voucher, yes, vouchers. Yes, please, Neglias.
Sorry.
Neglias, two vouchers in your package, I said they conform with uh your requirements.
No, Neglias.
Neglias, two bills.
Vote on Neglias bills?
I make a motion to approve Neglias bills as presented.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Yeah, I have one more quote for you, Joan, let me protect you. Yeah. Yeah, you've used that one before, it's, it's not a new one.